All right, welcome everybody to the Gilbert Planning Commission meeting. This is a good turnout tonight. If you haven't already, if you wish to speak or in support or opposition of a particular item, please make sure that you grab a card in the back. It's a blue slip. Fill it out, indicate which case you're here for, whether you're opposed to the item, or you wish, or in support, and whether or not you wish to speak. Staff is going to be monitoring, I think we've got some staff members back there, monitoring the slips as we speak. Hopefully, we don't run out. Looks like we've got a big crowd tonight. But just make sure that you get this filled out so we can make sure to call you up to the dais if needed. With that said, we'll go ahead and get started. And welcome you to the Planning Commission meeting for October 3rd. Can I get a roll call, please?
Chairman Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
Vice Chairman Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Bianchi.
Here.
Commissioner Chad Fuller.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Steiger.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Ailer.
Here.
All right. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
Chairman, I have a list of what we would like to approve on the agenda this evening. Be patient with me. We would move to approve, oh, move to approve the agenda, sorry, as presented during study session, or do you want me to read it all?
Probably read it all, because some of these people weren't here during the study session. We're making some changes, so you might want to just refer to your studies, or to your agenda pretty closely.
We are keeping everything that was on the consent agenda, and then we are adding item number 23, the use permit for Edgy Prize, to the consent agenda. We're moving items 25 and 26, which is GP 12-05 and Z 12-10, to the consent agenda. And we are moving number 29, Z 11-14, to the consent agenda. And then we are moving item numbers 27 and 28, GP 12-06 and Z 12-08, to the beginning of our public hearing agenda, our non-consent items. So that item will be heard first.
All right, I've got a motion to approve the agenda as revised. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Peterson, second by Commissioner Steiger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll now move on to communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anybody here wishing to speak under those terms? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the public hearing consent portion of the agenda. Consent public hearing items will be heard at one public hearing. After the consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion at the request of a member of the commission or staff. An item may be removed from the consent calendar, may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent public hearing and approved under a single motion. And with that...
Okay, with that, Chairin, I move to approve on the consent agenda items number 6, 7, and 8, items number 10 through 21, items 23, 25, 26, and 29.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Vice Chairman Peterson, second by Commissioner Steiger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
And then Chairman, item number 9 on the consent agenda, you needed to...
Yes, I need to recuse from that, as I own property within 300 feet of that case.
So I move to approve item number 9 from our consent agenda this evening. If I could get a second for that.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chairman Peterson, second by Commissioner Fuller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'll be abstaining.
All right.
Okay.
I think we're good.
So with that, we'll move to the public hearing non-consent item, or portion of the agenda. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard in an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form, which we talked about earlier, it's a blue form in the back, indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. And as we related at the study session, we're moving a couple of those items to be heard first on this portion of the agenda, and that's items number 27 and 28. And with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and who's the planner on that? We'll go ahead and introduce Mr. Ward.
Good evening, Chairman Whitman and members of the Planning Commission. This is a request for a minor general plan amendment and rezoning for Central Christian Church. It's a new development on a portion of it known as Copper Leaf, which is a residential development. It's located at the southeast corner of Lindsay and Jermaine Roads. Here's a picture of the overall 157-acre gross Central Christian Church site. You can see there's approximately 40 acres in the northwest corner, which are developed for the church. The remaining is in agricultural use. To the immediate east is the Estates at the Spectrum. To the south is Leyton Lakes, west Eagle Glen. That's Jermaine Road on the north, Lindsay Road on the west side of the site. The request is to amend the zoning on it. You can see the white line. Essentially, the church will be maintaining or retaining the 58.5-acre portion, which contains the existing church campus on the northwest corner, while the residential area along the east and southeast and south portions of the site is proposed to be rezoned to accommodate potential future residential development. The initial phase of this development will be located up in the northeast corner, it's known as Copper Leaf, containing 35 acres. In addition to the site, to the zoning, there's also a general plan amendment. You can see that 41 acres down in the southeast corner of the subject property, there's an amendment to the land use classification on that from residential 1 to 2, which supported the previous zoning and development proposal on the site, to residential 2 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre to accommodate the proposed rezoning and the overall potential development of the property to residential. So again, the land use classification on the 99.3 acres, which is the subject of tonight's hearing, 41.1 acres will be reclassified from residential 1 to 2 to residential 2 to 2.5. That means all the land within the subject area will be under the same land use classification, residential 2 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre. From a zoning point of view, we have existing five different zoning classifications. Again, this is a holdover from the late 90s when there was going to be a different type of development on the site, even before the Central Christian Church came into effect. Current zoning is SF 7, 8, 10, and 35, and the proposal would be to change that to SF 6, 7, and 8. So in other words, adding SF 6 and eliminating SF 10 and 35 on that total 99.3-acre area. I already discussed the general plan exhibit. It's at 41 acres at the southeast corner. This is the proposed zoning on the site, a combination 6, 7, and 8. And this is designed to accommodate potential three phases of residential development on the site, as this scenario unfolds over the years. This is the original 2005, or even back to 2001 scenario of the overall Central Christian Church campus build-out. And again, their corporate plans have now changed, and there's a proposal to retain that northwest corner of the campus and sell off first phase of 35 acres, potentially overall 99 acres. And this is a development plan actually showing the new zoning, and this is a plausible plat showing the development with the 53 acres, 99 acres being developed. The first phase is Copper Leaf up in the northeast corner. You can see how these other two phases may unfold in the future. And this is an overlay of the Copper Leaf plat, which is coming up this fall before Planning Commission and Town Council, on the preliminary plat at least. And you can see how that would fit in. So essentially, the plat, potential plat would cover 286 lots. There's only a first phase of that at the current time, which would be Copper Leaf, 111 lots on 35 acres. Overall density is 2.88 dwelling units per acre. And there is a possibility of Chandler School District requesting an 11-acre elementary school on that remaining 64 acres after the Copper Leaf plat proceeds. There's no known opposition to this application. It would provide improvement of streets, utilities, and open spaces. There are some modified conditions which staff has handed out, and with that, staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to the conditions as provided. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ward. Is there any questions from the commission or comments for Mr. Ward? Commissioner Bianchi?
Yeah, we talked about the potential school site. Do they know where in this development that might be located? Could you potentially point that out?
I have not seen Commissioner Bianchi specifically where that is, but this is approximately 40 acres of area here, and there's probably about another 24 in this area to compromise, to contain the future development. Probably somewhere in the central area would be the location of the school site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for staff? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ward. We'll go ahead and invite the applicant up. If you could introduce yourself and give your name and place of business, please.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Greg Davis with I Plan Consulting, here on behalf of Taylor Morrison and Central Christian Church. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Given the agenda that you have before you, I have significantly pared down my presentation to really focus on the four items that were brought up at the study session, the last hearing. So if you'll allow me that, I will gladly answer other questions afterwards. The first and foremost is one Al already covered, and that was regarding the general plan. The existing category of residential 1 to 2 was thought to be somewhat inconsistent with the SF 7 and 8 that were being proposed on it. We have such submitted the plan for the minor amendment, which is before you tonight. So we hope that that is more consistent with what the general plan would look for as far as zoning categories is concerned. But more importantly, one of the things that we have also done is we've maintained the current proposal of 286 units, or the 2.88 units per acre. That's what we started with before the general plan amendment was brought up. It did meet the blended density of the entire site, but with the general plan amendment, that would allow us an opportunity to add units to the site, an additional 60 or so. We've represented all along to the neighbors, as well as to the town, that we would not proceed with that. We're comfortable with the project as it's proposed. Thus, we are not maximizing the density under this amendment and keeping the 286 units. The final portion of that is that we've also filed the P-80 rezoning to basically lock that in. When we did meet with the neighbors to discuss the general plan amendment, we wanted to make sure they understood that the rezoning did lock us in at that 286-unit count, such that if anyone wanted to change that, they would have to obviously go back to the neighbors and come before this commission and ultimately to Town Council for change. So we've done all those things, hopefully to be consistent with what your vision is, as well as to give the neighbors the assurances that we've met the intent of our original The second question that was brought up is regarding the church's ability to access our Collector Street. Let me back up to the overall plan real quick. The intent is that the road will allow them access. The church does not have any plans to access it at this time. They don't have any plans for their current expansion right now. They're retooling their overall organizational thoughts on that. So we've designed the road so that they will own up to the right-of-way, and will have the ability to access that spine road and have access out to the RTO roadways, which we think is what the intent of that roadway originally was. Third question that was brought up was regarding the fire stations and the noise created by them. It's pretty common practice that we do put homes adjacent to emergency service areas. The amount of calls that they get where they actually have to use their sirens is pretty limited. This fire station also has a signal interface with Jermaine Road, so they technically don't turn on their sirens until they're out on the right-of-way, which would have the same impact if it was a mile away versus next door. And the final consideration is that we, all the lots that are adjacent to the fire station are, have an extended depth to them to help allow for different buffering techniques, should the neighbors feel that that be necessary. And the final question, which Al also touched on, is the viability of the subdivision, being that we are only proceeding with Phase 1 at this time. The map of the subdivision is shown here. We have worked with staff to make sure that it meets the requirements. It has two points of access, it has enough retention, our open space for both retention and the many of the areas, so that if Phase 2 is sometime down the road, it's not only meets the minimum requirements of the subdivision ordinance, but it's a livable community. So we feel that it does address that concern as well. But as I mentioned to begin with, we're here to see if you have any other questions or concerns, I'd be glad to answer. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there any questions or comments for the applicant? Commissioner Bianchi?
Great, can you explain the 286 lots again? I don't know if I understood that properly. So the previous plan, it was capped at 286 lots, or this plan, you're saying you will not exceed that? Is this comparable to the one that's currently on the books?
Chairman, Commissioner Bianchi, the current entitlement doesn't have a set number of lots to it. What I represented is that we've initially started with 286 units when we first met with the neighbors at the pre-op stage, meeting with the town staff. So even though the general plan amendment that's before you tonight would allow an additional increase in the number of units on the 99 acres, that's not part of our proposal, and that's why we're committed to it, not only verbally here, but also with the P-80 case as well.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Ward. I almost called you Mr. Ward. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Al, is there anything further that you wanted to add? Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on this item? I don't think we have any cards on this item. I don't think that there's anybody out there. Okay, and Al, you said you don't want, well, not anybody out there to speak on this case at least. Nothing further to add? Okay, well, we'll go ahead and close this item and bring it back to the dais for discussion among the planning commissioners. Anybody want to lead us off? Potential motion? Anything? Commissioner Bianchi?
I think as far as discussion, I think for consistency and to allow the development on the site, I understand the general plan amendment. I think that's pretty straightforward. I guess along the lines that I had during study session was, my concern is that the rezoning allows for even more small lot residential, specifically SF 6 and 7 than the original plan that we have now, where we lose all that SF 10, and then we lose a majority of the SF 8. My preference would be not to see the density lowered and have 3/4 of the acreage going to small lot residential at a loss to the SF 8 and 10, because it's just, it's more increased density, and we're losing any of that midsize density to small lot residential. We see this occurring more and more. So that's my concern.
Okay. Anybody else? Any further comments? Commissioner Fuller?
Tony, did you feel that the increased density is incompatible with the surrounding uses?
I don't know about incompatible. I mean, when you see the plan up there now, I know what we talked about during study session was, well, what happens if only one phase gets built? Where does that leave us on the rest? That brought me to the question of where does the school get situated on this? And if that's built out, does that go into an SF 6 district? Or does this go into a higher, do we lose more SF 7 or SF 8, and that's where the school site goes? So just kind of maximizing the amount of lots that we can put here. I think that's more or less my concern. I think the plan's probably compatible. There is no opposition to it, so, which means folks seem to be okay with it. I think the applicant's, looks like a nice plan that fits well. That's just my concern, is we continue to lose more of the SF 8 and SF 10 and replace it with small lot residential.
Yeah, I had a little, you know, I don't think, in FS, I wouldn't classify an SF 6. In my view, it's a small lot. I'm okay with the class, I think, I agree with Tony 100% on the general plan. As far as the rezon, I don't look, to me, the distribution that they have in the zoning districts with the SF 6, SF 7, the SF 8, I think they've actually done a pretty good job there. Could have they incorporated some, you know, SF 10s, or maybe had more SF 8 and less SF 6? Potentially, yeah, but, you know, I don't, when somebody comes to me and says, yeah, this is an FS, SF 6, to me, that is not a small lot residential subdivision. That's a 6,000-square-foot lot minimum, and that's a decent-sized lot. We're not talking, in my view, we're not talking about an SFD, or, you know, a 3,000-square-foot lot, or a six-pack cluster housing, alley-load product. They may do alley-load here, I doubt it with this, but, you know, I think this is more of your traditional housing. It's not your large lot, it's not your SF 10s, but they do have a decent amount of SF 8s. And so, given that mix, I'm sure they could have tended more to the SF 8 and taken some out of the SF 6, but I'm comfortable with the zoning classifications.
All right, any additional comments, questions, thoughts? I did have one that I probably should have brought up with staff earlier, but I noticed that the applicant had agreed to a density, an overall density cap, and a unit cap. Is that part of the stipulations? I didn't notice that. It's part of the P-80. Thanks, Al, sorry.
Chairman Whitman, no, that's not in there, but what is in there is a condition stipulating to the development plan, and this is part of the development plan with 180, 286 lots. So it's part of the development plan, and the development plan's attached to it, and it's stipulated, it's part of the ordinance.
Is the, oh, yeah, we have the revised conditions. Forgive me for a second, which stipulation is he referring to? Does anybody know?
Mr. Ward, which stipulation are you referring to with the development plan, so we can find it easily?
Let me check my notes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, we have the revised conditions up here, so it's, we're flipping back and forth.
I just want to make sure that if the stipulation is written, so that it's more of substantial conformance to the plan. Strictly, I think, with regard to the density, I think we can move lots around, but I don't want the density increased if that was the agreement between the applicant and the town.
I agree.
Chairman Whitman, perhaps I stand clarified, that is a condition, but it'll be in the actual ordinance, it'll be carried forth to council, so it is, it will be provided in there, the development plan is approved with the ordinance.
Chairman, we can also include that, if that's the desire of the commission, to make sure that's clear, we can write that clearly into the ordinance.
Additional stipulations?
You bet.
Personally, I would like, since it is an agreement with the applicant and the town above and beyond the actual development plan, I would like to add maybe a separate stipulation from my perspective, that really locks in that overall density on the overall site. I'm hoping that the applicant is okay with that, if that's something that they've already agreed to. And I think that, I think it fits in well with the area. It looks like, given the site plan and the area adjacent to it, the lots almost match up, which I think is good. I like the connection between the two communities as well on the east side. I like the fact that the church will have the potential to have access to that spine road in the future, if additional phases are built with the church. I'd hate to see people who may belong to that church and live within the neighborhood have to exit out onto the arterial street just to come back in. I think that might provide some traffic conflicts in the future. But again, overall, I think the density fits well, and I'm fine with the plan. So with that, is there, anybody here want to craft a motion?
I'll go for the general plan one.
Vice Chairman?
Recommend to the Town Council approval of GP 12-06 to change the land use classification for approximately 41.1 acres of real property generally located south of the southeast corner of Lindsay Road and Jermaine Road, from residential 1 to 2 dwelling units per acre, land use classification to residential 2.2 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre land use classification.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chairman Peterson, a second by Commissioner Fuller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this motion passes. Do we have a motion for approval for the zoning case?
For the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend approval to the Town Council for Z 12-08, as requested, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Are these the modified conditions?
Modified, thank you.
And what about the additional condition?
Including that the development plan lists 286 lots in the ordinance.
As number 12.
As the total density cap.
Do you accept that revision, Commissioner?
I do.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Steiger.
I'll second it.
Second by Vice Chairman Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, this item is approved. Okay. I do have to apologize, I don't know if this person is still here or not. We received a card earlier for an agenda item that was on the consent, his name is Charles McNeil. Charles, are you still here?
Yes.
I apologize, sir. Your card was stuck in a pile with many of the others, and we didn't realize that you had wished to speak on that item, that we approved on the consent, and that approval was strictly to continue it to the public hearing next month. Does that work for you? Do you still want to speak on it? Okay, again, we apologize for that. I guess we'll see you next month, then? Thank you. Okay, now, moving on.
Chairman Whitman?
Yes.
I could interrupt for one second. Somebody handed us some keys that were found in the lobby, so just to make an announcement that if anybody's lost their keys, we have them up here at the...
Looks like it's on a blue S-ring.
Correct.
Does anybody recognize those?
It's a Volkswagen.
Oh, good, good, good. All right, so let me reorient myself with the agenda. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Vice Chairman, but I think we're on item number 22. This is Use Permit 12-03. It's a conditional use permit for approximately 1.57 acres of real property located at 3840 South Higley Road to allow McDonald's Restaurant with extended hours of operation in the neighborhood commercial zoning district with a planned area development overlay, subject to conditions to provide buffering and to mitigate impacts on adjoining residential area. And we'll welcome back Mr. Ward again.
Chairman Whitman and members of the Planning Commission, this is a request for a use permit approval for McDonald's Restaurant northwest corner of Higley and Jermaine Road. The nature of the request is for a limited-service drive-through restaurant with extended hours of operation. Again, Higley Road and Jermaine Road, it's shown there where the star is. The site is, as was mentioned, 1.57 acres. From a background point of view, again, it's limited-service restaurant, extended hours of operation, neighborhood commercial, P-80 district, and it's part of the Stratlin Estates. Overall, P-80 SF 6 zoning adjacent to it, to the west and north sides, and off to the east is Santan Ranch across Higley Road. And the distance from the drive-through lane to the residential property is 152 feet to the west, and 110 feet to the north. The requested proposal for a 3,900-square-foot limited-service restaurant, dual-lane drive-through access, hours of operation are requested to be extended for this restaurant from the typical 6 to 11 p.m. on a typical weekday in the neighborhood commercial district, to 5 a.m. to 11 p.m. But they are requesting 24-hour operation of the drive-through lane, which comprises a big portion of their business. a big portion of their business, 24 hours, seven day a week for the drive-through. Right-in, right-out access to the site from Higley Road to the east, Jermaine Road to the south as well as a right-turn deceleration lane for access, traffic accessing the site. Two-way circulation on the north and west sides of the building. The building is pressed up close, pressed up tight to the south and east corner of the site. Adequate parking is provided. Here's an overall picture of it. Again, the site is located right at the northwest corner. Stratlin Estates off to the west. This is our more recent photography now. You can see the lots are starting to fill in. Santan Ranch east, mill, Windmill Ranch to the south, Stratlin Shadows to the south. This is the site plan. The site area is shown in brown. The building is also shown in brown. Essentially, there's access, right-in, right-out access from Higley Road into the site and also from Jermaine Road to the south. The parking is off to the north and west of the building. The building is located toward the east side of the site. The drive-through lane is on the south side. And on the east side of the building, there's dual access lane on the south side, dual order systems, menu boards, order systems. And off to the west is Briarwood Lane and Claxton Court to the north as part of Stratlin Estates. So this shows the distances between the drive-through lane and the adjoining residential property lines. The code, land development code requires 100-foot separation between a drive-through lane and a residential lot. When you incorporate Briarwood Lane and two adjacent landscape easements either side of the site and the actual distance, there's 152-foot separation from property to the west, 110 feet to property to the north. And you can see the trash enclosure also. I put a distance on that. There's approximately 100-foot separation from this site over to residential development. Again, a little bit closer in, shows you the building in blue, shows you the proximity to the recent era photography that we've got. From a operations point of view, it's a relatively small size site. It operates, as we mentioned, the request is 5:00 a.m. to 11:00. Kitchen contains high-quality vents and baffles to hopefully reduce the odors being admitted, the smoke and odors being admitted. Refuge is picked up every second day, every each day or second day. The applicant indicates the store manager will be responsible to address any loud noises occurring in the parking lot. Of course, any kind of loitering, unruly behavior as well. Litter is picked up daily. The applicants are proposing enhanced landscaping along the north and west boundaries to help to mitigate the views and impacts of the site on adjoining residential. And lighting for the site would be low-impact and subdued. That's, these are what the applicant is indicating. That's a relatively small McDonald's. No play place would be incorporated in. It's pretty much miniaturized, or at least on the smaller side as we familiar with McDonald's. Drive-through operation 24/7. They do have digital order stations, electronic order confirmation screens, which do help to, they've come a long way since the, since the seventies and eighties and nineties, I suppose, with ordering. It's, it's not the squawk box that we've come to know over the years at a fast food restaurant ordering, restaurant. Microphone and speaker levels they're indicating are preset at a relatively low level. They've indicated with a sound study that it's rated as quiet from a noise analysis point of view, 128 feet. Drive-through lane separation distances, as I mentioned, 152 and 110. Six-foot property line, site wall along the west side. Here's the noise impact analysis that was provided by the applicant. You can see the red line extends out to that line, which would be called the quiet zone. That's 42 decibels. According to noise analysis, 42 decibels is indicated as quiet and it's probably quite a bit lower than my voice right now. The two red boxes are the order stations, so you can see the distance, 128 feet with the actual lot line to the west being 203. And to the north, it's around 300, 300 feet. The applicants have provided enhanced landscaping. I just wanted to show you this, which is one of the things that they're proposing to do to mitigate the impacts of the noise along the west side. Enhanced landscaping, which shows a thicker tree landscape base than would normally be provided for. So again, the site, you can see, is kind of miniaturized to some extent. Just minimum building, minimum parking, just enough drive-through lane to make it work on this, on this relatively tight site. Now, it's part of the use permit requirement. Four findings have to be met. The applicant indicates, the first one is not detrimental health, safety, general welfare of the residents. The applicant indicates that this is a suitable location for McDonald's. They've done many McDonald's, close proximity to residential areas, and they feel that this is suitable based on their experience aspects related to traffic, circulation, et cetera, parking odor, noise, lighting. They're all dealt with and they've got a list of explanations on how that, those are reached on. Again, staff has some concerns, though, the lot is relatively too small, relatively small. Due to the smallness, even with their good second site plan, it's currently under review. It still is not adequately sized to mitigate the impact on adjoining neighborhoods for a limited service restaurant with extended hours of operation drive-through lane. The second criteria, it conforms with the intent and purpose of the general plan and policies. The applicant indicates that it does conform. It's located along an arterial, neighborhood commercial district. It's intended to serve the local communities, which are all quite true in the neighborhood commercial district. However, staff feels that the use is just deemed to be too intensive. It's, the site's just a little bit small and it's too intensive for this location. Conforms with the requirements of the zoning code, that criteria. The applicant says it fully complies with the LDC. Staff feels that although the setbacks are met, they technically meet the setback requirements, it still doesn't conform with the code to the fact that those impacts are not mitigated by the setbacks that are being provided. In other words, the setbacks are really required to be increased rather than just the minimums being met. And finally, would not unduly interfere with the use and enjoyment of the neighboring properties. The applicant, again, states noise, the drive-through, parking lot, unruly patrons, odors, refuge, et cetera, have all been addressed and they've gone to significant lengths to try to address all those on the site. But again, staff feels, even though they've done a great job, the staff feels the potential impacts are significant and significantly more buffering is probably required in order to make this thing work and also that from a traffic point of view. We have received three letters of objection from neighbors in the area. They cite the typical things, noise, odor, lighting, refuge, 24-hour operation. So we do have objections to the neighborhood. And staff, with all this, under consideration, staff is recommending denial of this application. The findings are not met. Feel that the site is too small to impact the, to mitigate the impacts, too intensive a use of this location. Again, neighborhood commercial use, where this use, even though it is acceptable, the use permit would require a, probably a larger site. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any of your questions and thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Mr. Ward. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Steiger?
Al, out of the very first of the four criteria, if you could put that slide back up, which of the aspects do you believe or not, or does staff believe or not, properly mitigated even though the setbacks and everything are correct?
Commissioner Steiger, the ones that are mentioned here, traffic access, circulation, parking noise, odor, let's, let me just mention those. From a traffic circulation point of view, it's a little bit difficult. It's a right-in, right-out scenario only, so there's some concern by staff of U-turns. For example, you have to approach from the south along westbound Jermaine. If you're going eastbound, the way to get to this site would have to be either go through the intersection and hang a 180 or right at the intersection do a U-turn and similarly coming down from the north. So there's, there's some concerns about that access being limited access, right-in, right-out only on both sides. From a noise point of view, it certainly meets the 128 feet offered up by the applicant's noise study, but these lots are 152 feet away. So while we meet that criteria by, is that 14 feet, 24 feet, something like that, it's, it's just cutting a little too close. And one of the overriding factors is the 24 hours of operation. It's not a, we can maybe get by with it till 11:00 or something like that, but it's 24 hours, seven days a week. So that's, those are pretty much the concerns, the lack of separation distance, traffic circulation, et cetera.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Ailer?
Yeah, you had a slide that had a dimension on a trash enclosure being 100 feet away, but I was looking at, is it actually closer or, because if you're 110 to that corner, the drive being 24, I was just wondering if it's actually closer on that side or not. Where were you dimensioning the other side from?
Commissioner Ailer, they, it's a little deceptive there and I actually did measure this off. I think it came to 98, so I just rounded it.
Right.
Property line to property line. This particular property extends further east than those lots. So if we're talking about from the edge of that property over to this, you can see there's a little bit of a, incorporating that is a little bit further eastern position of that lot. So it's very close to 100 feet.
Okay. And then the other question, just looking at the traffic impact of the queuing from, we only have 51 feet from the, from the box for, as in from the actual order station. So would we be queuing out into that, into the driveway? Because 51 feet's really three cars, if that.
Well, one of the advantages of this, Commissioner Ailer, is the dual lanes and dual order boxes, order stations. So actually, there's an order station on both sides of this. With the, with that being broken up like that, it does give you an opportunity for six or seven cars there. It does, it does appear to meet the requirements. They do, as I mentioned, it's a relatively tight site.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for staff?
Chairman?
Chairman Fuller? Or Commissioner Fuller? Wow, I'm so used to calling you chairman.
Al, can you, just so I understand, a use permit is required to operate a McDonald's restaurant on this site and why is that so?
Commissioner Fuller, because of the zoning of the site. A limited service restaurant with extended hours is permitted use in more intense commercial districts, shopping center, general commercial, community commercial. But in the neighborhood commercial, the neighborhood commercial is really intended to be kind of a, I don't want to say intimate, but intimate little area where there's local stores and services that fit the needs of the immediate area. Now, McDonald's certainly fits the needs of the local area. However, because it's so small and because there might be interference with adjoining uses, I think when they formed the ULDC, Land Development Code, that they anticipated that their, a use like this limited service restaurant may be suitable in NC, but probably on a maybe a little bit larger site and a little bit more circulation components to it.
Great. So just so I understand, they need a use permit to have the restaurant, the extended, and then they would need a use permit for the extended hours and they'd also need a use permit for the drive-through. Is that correct?
Not exactly. The drive-through and the limited service are just really one. So it's a--
Okay.
Limited service restaurant allows a drive-through, so that's one use permit, extended hours.
Gotcha. Great, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? I guess I have a question. I did notice that, that both sides on Higley and also on Jermaine, they have full medians, which limits the access, as you mentioned in your report. But are there other areas in Gilbert where we have a fast-food type facility all by itself on one small piece of, or parcel of land immediately adjacent to neighbors, other than in a commercial shopping center with other uses?
My feeling is that we do have those in a city of 210,070, 72 square miles. But I did want to do a little more research on that before I would commit to it. A lot of times, for example, this site here, you can see on the southeast corner, that's Windmill Plaza, and there is a Sonic, which also received a limited service restaurant approval with extended hours back in '06, '05. And that is situated with others. So it's, I believe it's entirely possible that there can be a standalone restaurant, but only if it has good site amenities.
Okay, great. No further questions? So Commissioner Steiger?
I was headed in one of the same directions you were. I live down in that area and there's another McDonald's at the corner of Power Road and Queen Creek. Now, it, it backs up to, or it abuts residential sites. I don't know of any complaints. I can tell you the HOA didn't get complaints about smell, noise, lighting and any of those things. It does have a difference on the traffic because you are able to, there is no median there that would prevent access from both east and westbound power. There is a median on the other side, excuse me, east and westbound Queen Creek. So, you know, you make a good point about the traffic, Al, and that's not much the applicant can do about that.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for staff? All right, thank you, Mr. Ward. With that, we'll invite the applicant up. If you could just give your name and, and city of residence?
My name is Dan Philuk and work office is at 300 West Clarenden in Phoenix, KDF Architectural Group. And we are pleased to be here actually this evening. It's been a while in coming, I have to say. We were almost ready last month and had to ask a continuance that you kindly granted. And so we're here this evening actually with changes to what we had previously submitted to you. Bear with me a little bit, I'll probably be reading a little bit from the narrative that I hope all of you recently got. We got into a little bit of a delay working with the planning folks, unforeseen circumstances. So I'll be using some of this as a reference and hopefully able to talk to some of the points that you've already addressed tonight. The location, we show for you here an image of the, of a typical McDonald's, of a scale actually similar to what we're proposing at this location. Just an image, it's, actually, this one's in another state, but we just thought it would be nice for you to see kind of a sense of what kind of building scale we're talking about here. Just to point out briefly again, the location, which Al has already mentioned and described, the property is currently zoned as NC commercial. And we believe that we actually will fit into this community rather well with the NC commercial on diagonal corners here. We have an existing Walgreens and the Sonic mentioned earlier and the Kinder Care. The Sonic, actually, I'd like to make just a point about that for a moment. It actually is very similar to what we're requesting tonight in that it requested extended hours in an NC zone, drive-through. And actually, we did a little bit of calculating on its use of site and we actually feel that we are going to have less density, if you will, per acre on our site than the Sonic was that was approved. So we just thought we'd like to point out that we're not the first one on the block, so to speak, who's asking for this permission. I'd like to just mention briefly a little bit of the history of coming here. We did a pre-application procedure with the commission here, or the planning department. And we talked through a number of concerns they had, went back to our drawing board, reworked the facility and then came back again with another one where we kind of tried to keep everything contained in the facility. Just looking here for a second. And we got some good feedback and then we went to discuss a variance where we were a little bit larger than we hoped to be. And we got, again, some good feedback, went back, looked at that again and came up then finally with the scheme that you see before you this evening. So in doing so-- So in doing so, we were interested in serving the southeast corner of Gilbert. And after some meetings with the public and the planning department, we've come up with this third site that is actually what we call a reverse store. This is a little unusual in that the drive-through sequence on this is, if you will, backwards, which means all the kitchen operations are in reverse, which means that this particular restaurant will need a unique group of trained staff that would not work at other stores. They will be selected for this particular store in a reverse. And what's interesting to note is because McDonald's feels that this is a good site for them, they've gone to the effort of this reverse store in spite of the fact that out of approximately 13,000 McDonald's across the U.S., there's approximately eight or nine stores that use this reverse pattern. So we really feel like we've made the extra effort to try to make this work, to address a lot of the issues that have been brought up. Specifically to the business of the, the drive-through facilities, I would like to clarify, there are actually two distances that are important. The drive-through facilities are required to be 50 feet from the properties designated for residential use in the general plan. In our instance, we have in one direction, we're 225 feet away, and 165 feet away to the north. That's the drive-through facilities itself, which would be on the right side facing South Higley, and it's the area described by basically the two canopies. That's truly what you'd call your drive-through facility. Now, the other item that was mentioned earlier are the drive-through aisles, and we do agree, the drive-through aisle exit at the north is approximately 114 feet away from the residential, and the others are approximately 152 feet. Then on to the second part of the request for the CUP tonight, we are talking about the hours of operation. And what we are proposing here is something that McDonald's has found nationally, that there's a substantial interest in being able to purchase your nighttime snacks. They just find that there's quite a market out there. And so as part of its new store program, McDonald's is making this request for all locations. The request for extended drive-through hours is, is part of the national program to be responsive to customers. However, the implementation of extended hours is evaluated based on local customer demand.
Okay.
And we don't really believe the request is singularly unique. As we mentioned earlier, Sonic went through a very similar process in getting their site As to the four conditions, the proposed use not be detrimental to health, safety, or general welfare, we, we feel it does work well for us, in that we've laid it out to, in respect of the public meeting that McDonald's sponsored, and we had some good participation there. We did some follow-up with some of the citizens who were concerned, and actually met with one individual another time to talk about the concerns. And we took all that, along with the planning department's concerns, and, and came up with this scheme where you can see now that the building is moved pretty much as far away as possible, as we can, from the residence. We've put the, the noise sources, if you will, facing Higley. So in effect, there's really not even a line of sight or noise from the actual drive-through windows to the residence. And then the actual order points, as was mentioned earlier, honestly are as far away as we possibly can be without then going back for a variance to say, let's get even further from the residence because of their concerns. I think, it was pointed out a little bit earlier about the issue of the median breaks and whether they could be there. We understood the concerns, as they were explained earlier to us, about traffic patterns. And so we felt we should respect the existing traffic, as well as the existing curb cuts on the property, and implement those in our solution, rather than asking for another drive somewhere else along the property, or, or even going for a median break. So I think we would like to also point out, and let me see if I can find this on this monitor, okay. This slide is interesting in that it's a little bit of history on the site. This is the site that was approved in 2007. And you can see it has a small retail, kind of a strip center, if you will, up in the corner with parking below. You will see that the west side and the north side of that structure are pushed up quite tight against the minimum setbacks from the residential properties. And what was interesting in this, while we don't know exactly the tenants, the tenant mix here, to point out, there has been some concern of McDonald's and intensive use and the type of activity there. We'd like to point out that in an NC use here, there are a variety of things that could be here, such as animal clinics, grooming services, commercial laboratories, daycare center, dry cleaning, funeral and undertaking services, laundry outlets, as well as urgent care facilities are all permitted in the NC zoning. So we feel McDonald's actually could be quite a good neighbor in this situation, and just wanted to point out that the other possibilities here. Apologize, just did want to point out one other thing. I'll go back to the Sonic density, which I mentioned earlier. There is an interesting analysis we did. This site's unusual because of its arterial location and its size at 1.57 acres. There's 50-foot setbacks required on two sides. What that effectively does is make the property, the NC property usefulness reduce from typically 75% of the gross land that could be used for a location that wasn't flanked by two arterials. In our case, we're at about 65%, and we're still rather pleased with the results that we achieved, that we were able to work the density without excessively covering the Just to try to wrap this up then, the, I wanted to show on the landscape plan here, the drive-through with a 24/7 operations request, we've located in such a way to reduce the impact on the neighborhood beyond the minimum drive-through facilities. As I mentioned earlier, those numbers well beyond the 50, significantly beyond the 100 requirements. And as well, we are protecting the residential using the building as kind of a block, and then locating everything as much as possible in the southeast corner. With the landscape plan, I'd like to point out that typically along the west and the north side, the combination there per the minimum code would be 17 trees. We have 25, and we've agreed to have half of those planted at a more mature size, so that we will quickly, more quickly, become a part of the neighborhood. And that screen of trees that we anticipate will help in buffering sound will be experienced We have also the sound curve. I did in this slide actually add one more curve for you, just to see, as you do get out further, the outermost curve is actually now whisper. This is an update from the one you have in front of you. We're at a whisper, and I think it's important to realize that what you have here is, these circles are based on a, let's say, a pure laboratory setting. Sound emanating from a central point and no interruptions experienced at those curves. In this case, again, we have the six-foot screen wall that was mentioned earlier, and the trees that help mitigate to the west. And then to the north, we're actually running right smack into the front of our building. So we really feel that the sound issue has been addressed rather well in this site plan. Site lighting will conform to all of the code minimums. We've, the, within 100 feet of the residential, it'll be 14 feet tall, others 25 feet tall maximum. Odor abatement addressed in several ways. As was mentioned earlier by Al, the scrubbers picking that up. There's also a newer technology of ozone equipment that will be introduced here at this facility to mitigate that as well. And there was mention of trash, trash pickup. I think it was mentioned daily. That's actually incorrect. It's done usually one to two hours. A staff member is sent out to clean up the site. So with this, we feel that we have actually responded to the four issues pertinent to CUP approval, and we anticipate, any questions you may have? I have extra folks here with McDonald's as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions by the commissioners for the applicant? Commissioner Fuller?
Just a question. So the 24-hour request, is that, what are the hours of the Sonic? Do you happen to know? I, I tried to figure that out and...
I, I believe in our research, I believe Sonic asked for two extra hours. I believe they're open until 1:00 a.m.
Okay. And then opening probably around 5:00 a.m.?
Five or six, yes.
Five or six, okay. Okay. I've got a follow-up question. I'll probably hold on to that for a little bit. That's okay.
Okay. Any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Bianchi?
Sir, can, can you explain, and again, the buffer, the landscape buffer along Higley and Germaine, why it's, why there's more there compared to buffering of the neighborhoods with the landscaping?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I'm just looking at the way the footprint is there, and we've got the number of the, the landscape buffering between, along Higley and Germaine, rather than along the residential. Is that a, was that a town requirement? Can we explain that again?
That is a town requirement. The 50-foot setbacks were mandated, and that's why in one of our versions, we got into a variance request, we were having a hard time squeezing in because of those 50-foot setbacks.
So you couldn't push it closer.
Right. So that's why we came up with the reverse store that said, all right, now all the components do fit within the existing constraints of the NC site.
And you had mentioned, to Commissioner Fuller's point, that McDonald's policy is to kind of go ahead with these 24-hour restaurants. Do you know of any, as for comparable analysis, any other McDonald's in Gilbert with this similar zoning that have the 24 hours? Do we know if that's in effect anywhere?
I don't know if there are other McDonald's in Gilbert's NC zone. I have, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Ayler, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just had a quick one. You had mentioned the landscape along, you densified the, the trees along the residential side?
Correct. Right. As well as half of which would be more mature at time of planting.
Yeah, I was just looking at that. I'm assuming that's different from what's on the plan, because they're all 24-inch box on the plan on this that we're looking at.
And that was a discussion that we had with the planner that said we would be willing to, to provide half those trees at a more mature size, perhaps a two-inch caliper instead of the three-quarter minimum.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up to the public. We have a few cards up here that wish to speak. If anybody else, we have three of them, as a matter of fact. If there's anybody who came in late and wishes to speak on this item, please make sure you fill out a blue card and get it up to staff here at the round diet, or round table. With that, we'll go ahead and call up Heather Bernacki Wilke, who says she's opposed to the item and wished to speak. Again, if you could just state your name and city of residence, that'd be great.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Heather Bernacki Wilke, and I live at 2825 East Trigger Way in Stratland Estates. I'm speaking in opposition to item number 22, the use permit for McDonald's restaurant. Your staff has done an excellent job at capturing many of the concerns associated with this project and their findings. However, I do wish to draw your attention to a few additional areas of personal concern. Number one, why the applicant may have followed the Land Development Code notification requirements. They have failed to seek adequate stakeholder input. My husband nor I received the notice sent on July 12th, nor were we aware of the July 24th meeting. It is my opinion that all homeowners in the affected community should have been notified as a courtesy, regardless of the requirements. Number two, the proposed McDonald's would further exacerbate rush hour traffic issues in both the AM and the PM. Both Germaine and Higley are frequently used for commuters to access the 202 or the 60 freeways. While Higley has more than one lane at Germaine, it turns into a single lane at Williams Field a few miles down the road, and vehicles are pretty far backed up. Number three, several McDonald's locations are already established nearby, including one at Val Vista north of Pecos, Queen Creek and Power, Germaine and Gilbert, and Ray and Power. Furthermore, I do not see the need for a 24/7 operation of a drive-through facility, knowing that the surrounding area is mostly comprised of families with young children. And lastly, I'm concerned with the trash location and amount from the restaurant. This will create odors and will draw more insects to an area already populated with ants, crickets, spiders, and others in the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration of my opposition, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wilke. I have one quick question for you. Since you brought up the, the concern about not receiving any sort of notice, normally I wouldn't ask kind of where you live in respect to the site, but do you live pretty close to the site that you think that you should have received some sort of...
I'm on the west end of the property at 164th Way and Germaine.
I'm not sure how far that I was away from the site.
Well, the sites, the sites proposed at Germaine and Higley, 164th Way is the next street, further down when you head towards Santan Parkway.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any further questions for Ms. Wilke? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next person we have who wishes to speak is Meredith Simpson. She's opposed to the item and wishes to speak. Too small a lot, U-turns off of Germaine, property values, already have Sonic. So if Meredith is here and wishes to speak, it looks like she may have a baby.
And have a sister.
Oh, good. If you could state your name and city of residence, that'd be great.
Okay. My name is Meredith Simpson. I live at 3033 East Bars Avenue in Gilbert in Stratland Estates, adjacent to the McDonald's property. First, I would like to concur with Heather that I did not receive any notice about the zone changes that were, about the meetings that were held during, during the month of July. Previously, I lived adjacent to a property that was seeking zoning, and I was contacted at my door in person from someone from the architectural firm to present the concerns of the community. This is something that I would have appreciated. I appreciate the findings that were, that, all of the things that were presented, how they have addressed the concerns of the commission. However, I would have liked to have received more information. My family has concerns about the McDonald's proposed at Higley and Germaine. First and foremost, as a homeowner in Stratland Estates, I am concerned with the extended noise that could, the noise that could come with the extended hours into our community. I am also concerned with the community use-only parks and common areas within the Stratland Estates community that could become destinations for this relatively small-sized McDonald's restaurant. Litter and loitering are a big concern of mine and of my family. I'm concerned about the U-turns and the traffic flow. As it, as it is designed now, a U-turn is required to enter the property when traveling east on Germaine Road. This would be extremely dangerous in an already very busy intersection, as Heather has already addressed. Additionally, the Sonic restaurant located just south and east of this proposed site requires a U-turn to enter when traveling. I already find that dangerous for me as a driver when I'm, when I am attempting to go to the Sonic restaurant. I don't feel comfortable making that turn into the restaurant. Sonic has only that one main entrance and exit from Higley, although you can zig and zag through the daycare and the Walgreens properties. I think that the McDonald's having two prop, two property, excuse me, two entrances and exits that are both bounded by medians is going to set us up for a dangerous situation. My kids attend Santan Elementary School across Higley in the Santan Ranch Development. I have considered letting my children start riding their bike to school in addition to usually riding the bus. I believe that it's important for my kids to learn freedom and to navigate their community. However, I would never feel comfortable sending my child down Germaine Road to cross Higley if there's drive-through traffic, especially with that U-turn that is required if you're traveling east on Germaine, and you would have to U-turn backwards onto Germaine to go into that drive-through. I would never consider sending my children out to ride their bike, or even with my family. I would just feel very, very uncomfortable with this. I appreciate the, the, thank you.
Go ahead and wrap up your comments.
Okay. I was going to say that I appreciate how, how the gentleman presented from the architectural firm, all the ways that they are working to address the concerns of the community. However, I just think there's a lot more family issues that need to be considered besides zoning issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Hold on just a second. Are there any questions for, okay, for the public? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And the last speaker that we have is Molly Ashton. She says that she's opposed to this item and wishes to speak. You're the sister. Just go ahead and state your name and city for, for the record, please. Just go ahead and state your name and city for the record, please.
My name is Molly Ashton. I live in Gilbert, Arizona, in the Stratland Estates community as well. And I'm just going to reiterate a few of the points. As Heather and Meredith, I also was not notified of the meeting in July. And I'm a very active member in our community and would have loved to be there. And we had no notification of that. And I'm not located too far from the McDonald's. I'm more closer than Heather was, I know that. My biggest concerns are the traffic there. I mean, there's always accidents on Higley and Germain. There is activity there all the time with, during the rush hour times. And especially the U-turns, as Meredith pointed out and as everyone else has stated, that that is just going to cause more danger in that area. The bike riding as well, I have the same concern. My kids, I would never let them ride a bike across a drive-through restaurant like that. And it would just add to their decreased safety. In addition, Heather mentioned the McDonald's in the area. There's also another one that she failed to mention, which is going in on Higley between Ocatillo and Chandler Heights. So we're like within two miles right on Higley in a big commercial area. So it seemed interesting to me that this would be going in here so close to that area. In addition, I'm extremely concerned about the parks in our neighborhood, which are for residential use only. For this being such a small McDonald's, it seems to me like a lot more people are going to want to come and take their food to the nearest park, which are right there in our neighborhood. And I've spoken with several people who live in Windmill Ranch, which butts up to Sonic. And they said that the increase in vandalism and trash and loitering at their parks has been tenfold since the Sonic went in there. And they brought up those same concerns about now another fast-food restaurant going in there.
Great. Thank you. Is there any questions or comments for Ms. Ashton? Vice Chairman Peterson?
Chairman, Mrs. Ashton, has your HOA turned over to the residents? Or are you still under the control of the builder?
They just turned over last week, actually.
So when this was all going on, though, it was still under the control of the builder. So there was no actually formed HOA for your neighborhood yet to be notified? Okay. That's what I thought at the variance hearing last month that I had learned, because it's a little bit harder for the residents to get notice when the HOA hasn't been formed yet. Not an excuse. I just wanted to know that that was still the case.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's right.
New ladies did a great job tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? I don't have any more cards up here. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. Does the applicant want to address any of the comments made by the citizens? That's fine. You can come up. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Corporate address or home address?
Either one.
My name is Alaria Gian Santi, and I'm a real estate manager for McDonald's Corporation. I reside and I work in Scottsdale, Arizona. So thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I wanted to just comment on some of the items that were brought up. Dan Faluk did a great job, as well as Al, and we appreciate all the time that you guys have given us to speak with you and provide our input. I did want to let you guys know, and as Chairman Peterson brought up, we did notify everybody within 300 feet as required. We did also try to reach out to the HOA. Unfortunately, the HOA wasn't formed. So we actually even did a continuance in our last meeting when we came so that we would have another opportunity to present to that HOA. But it didn't, that opportunity didn't present itself. So I apologize that you weren't notified. It wasn't our intentions. I also wanted to let you know that there were some residents that had provided their input to Al via email and even some of the other, I don't know if any of the Commissioners received it. I think it went to possibly council. And we did reach out to those residents and met with some of those residents that were willing personally and with another couple of folks from our team. So we met with them when it was convenient for them. So we did try to get as much input as we possibly could. With respect to the trash, I did want to note that the trash enclosure has not moved from what has been previously permitted for the 10,000-square-foot building that was going to go here back in 2006. So it's in the same location. But what I can tell you is that after meeting with one of the residents, we have agreed to put in a drain there so that when we do go out and do any of our trash, you know, actual dumping of the trash, that the partner that is doing that is also rinsing out that enclosure at the same time. The other thing is, is Dan did note about the trash pickup that we go, we cross the property. It's usually hourly or even sometimes on the half hour. And then the last thing I wanted to point is on the 24/7. So I'm probably the best person that can speak to that. It is a national initiative. We go into every municipality and every location asking for 24/7 operations. Unfortunately, that is the part of my corporation that is, that is the big golden arches. But please remember that these locations are owned by owner-operators that live in your communities. We do teacher nights. We do fundraisers for the local schools. There are owners and operators in your community. And they're not going to open that location 24 hours a day, seven days a week, if the community doesn't drive that. So they're not going to pay for the staff to be in there if no one's coming and buying food at those hours. So we ask for it because that's a national initiative. But it doesn't mean that the store is actually going to operate that way. They're going to completely go off of what the community does at that location. So without that, I think that's everything that I was going to note. I would be happy if you guys wanted to put any median break. I'll take it any day. But we were really trying to stay with respecting what was currently there, the same curb cuts that exist there today. So, you know, that's kind of where that lies. But I'm happy if you want to put that as a stipulation, we'll put it in. So do you have any questions for me otherwise?
I don't. And it's Gian Santi?
Gian Santi.
Gian Santi.
And I can, I'll fill out a blue card so you guys have it.
That would be great. Commissioner Steiger, questions?
Yeah, I got one. Obviously, when you design your drive-through, you have some idea of queuing size, how many cars. What does your model say that during high-traffic times, and I'm talking about customer, high customer-use times, what do you see in an hour? What would you anticipate is the highest number of vehicles to use one of your drive-throughs when you start to, when you think about that in an hour?
I'd probably want to follow back up with you on that. And the reason I say that is because we have 14 different layouts for drive-through buildings. So when we select which drive-through, except for this reverse drive-through, this is a unique situation. When we select that, it's driven by a couple of different factors. It's driven by demographics in the area. It's driven by the sales projections that we put on this. And it's also driven by what average tickets are in the area of our existing stores. So from that capacity, I would hate to give you a number that wouldn't be consistent with the parameters of this site. But I'm happy to follow up and get you that information.
Can you give some sort of average? I mean, you have to have an average.
I don't. I don't. I don't, Asa, do you have anything? 162? Okay. I wasn't off. Okay. So 162 cars.
Per hour?
Yeah. I was going to say 150. So thanks, Asa. He's my construction manager with McDonald's.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any further questions? Mr., Commissioner Fuller?
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of questions. One, I wanted to follow up on something you said earlier, ma'am. You said, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I thought you said you didn't give notice to the HOA because the HOA hadn't been formed. The HOA has been formed. You have existing homeowners there. It just hasn't been turned over. So my question is, did you not give notice to the HOA?
No. We gave notice to all HOAs that were within the required 300 feet, as well as all the residents.
Right.
And then we had another consultant that attended our other meetings with us who personally got on the horn and reached out to every HOA. We, in addition with Stratland Estates, we asked the person that she spoke to, and if I need to get that specific information, I can, if there was somebody that they thought would be leading that HOA that we could possibly get in front of.
Gotcha. Okay.
We did reach out to the, we did all the proper notification procedures.
Gotcha.
But then we went extra. And it was, that's where we kind of got roadblocked because they weren't formed yet.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. They've been formed, it's just, anyway. Right. Okay.
At the time we had the public meeting, this was back in, was it August?
Yeah. I mean, you can look at the map. They've got homeowners there. So there is a homeowners' association. They just hadn't been turned over there.
Right. And so we had, the point person we were contacting was, I think, with the builder.
Right. That's probably right.
And the builder couldn't give us anyone that...
I just wanted to make sure that you, that you thought mistakenly that it hadn't been formed, therefore you hadn't given notice to the builder who was controlling it.
No, no, not at all.
Okay.
And anybody that sent an email, we asked to meet with them as well. So if anybody was interested, we were ready to meet with them.
Now, I'm not sure where my fellow Commissioners are on this. And so, and I may be way out in left field, but I'm not going to have you up here again. So I kind of want to ask you this. And this is not indicative at all about, because I don't know what the other Commissioners are thinking. With that very long caveat going into this question, in your mind, if the Commission were to approve your use permit but deny your request for the extended hours of operation, is that tantamount to a denial for you? I mean, would it matter to you if we did that? Would the site get built if, in your mind? How do you feel about an approval with no extended hours? Is that the same as if we just denied it?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it changes the sales projections and our ability to do this store.
No question would change your sales projections. No question. So if I, so I shouldn't even, if that would be something I would consider, what you're telling me is don't even consider that. That means nothing to us. Just either deny it or approve it how we have it in front of you tonight. Is that accurate?
Well, we would appreciate that. We would. I mean, I'm not at a level that I can approve. If it were, if you were to stipulate it without the 24/7 operations, I would have to take it to home office. And most likely, it would be presented as a no pursuit of the site.
Okay. That was my question. Okay. I don't think any of my points are for you. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the time.
Mic's not on. Any other comments? All right. Then, staff, would you like to follow up on any of the comments raised by the citizens or the applicant?
Chairman Whitman and members of Planning Commission, I just wanted to mention, as far as the notice goes, it seems to be, you know, the 300-foot notice is based on Maricopa County records. And this is the most recent site. We just got our brand-new photography. But I don't know if I kept, I think I did keep the old one. The, this is our previous photography. So you can see that the site's filling up really quickly. A lot of new homes going in. So that was the error on the notification. Not that the applicant didn't really try to outreach, because my experience with them is they did, they did hold a neighborhood meeting on the 24th of July, I believe. And there were approximately a dozen neighbors who did attend. So they have made good efforts along those lines. And the applicant has really done everything they can with his site. I also talked to them about considering less than 24 hours. And they really feel that that's an important component, comprising a large portion of their business. What I didn't really discuss with them is whether there's anything between closing at 11 o'clock and going 24/7. If there's any kind of, you know, they did indicate they wouldn't necessarily have to be open every night. It just depends on local sales. I don't know if there's a chance that they'd be okay to be something similar to Sonic or maybe a little bit longer now if there's any in-between hours. But it appears that, and I can't speak for them, that they are looking for that 24/7.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ward. Are there any other questions or comments for staff while we have them up here? You do? Commissioner Steiger?
Al, the comments about traffic and U-turns, I don't see how that's going to be any different for any use there. I guess about the, and correct me, tell me what the traffic folks have said about this. Now that we have an idea that you, in addition to whatever traffic they have inside the restaurant, that at a peak, they think it could be 150, 160 cars an hour. Not all of those are going to be making U-turns, of course. If you look at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 different ways you could travel, you know, let's say there are 30 U-turns, 50 U-turns in an hour. What do the traffic guys have to say about that versus what we keep hearing as less intensive uses?
Commissioner Steiger, the, first of all, let me start off by saying a U-turn is a legal turn. It's done in just about every intersection, unless it's indicated otherwise. The traffic that would be going into this site also has the right turn deceleration lane on the south side. But from an intensity point of view, with the drive-through lane versus the previous use where there might be a dentist, you know, an accountant, a couple of retail centers, a couple of retail businesses, this would generate a higher level of traffic, increasing those number of turns in and out of the site. So it just has to do with the degree, the extent. From a traffic circulation point of view, our traffic department does not have any problem with it, only not to say that they wouldn't prefer to have a right turn, a full-motion driveway, at least on one of these accesses. But it technically meets all those requirements.
Any further questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Mr. Ward. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing then and bring it back to the dais for comments.
Chairman, I just looked up the hours for Sonic because Commissioner Fuller had asked. And Sonic's website isn't specific to location, but it says that they're open 6:00 a.m. to midnight or later, depending on location.
Interesting.
So it doesn't say specifically for that one on Higley Road, but 6:00 a.m. to midnight or later. And I don't know if we had something else in the use permit when that went in. I remember when that Sonic went in. But you asked that question, so I looked it up.
You ready for some comments?
We are. Commissioner Fuller?
Okay. So, you know, my, it's kind of interesting going first.
You're always going last.
I know. You know, I really frankly don't have a problem with the use. I think the use is okay to me. I'll just keep it pretty brief. I don't, you know, some of the comments that were made by the neighbors, I appreciate them participating in the process. Their comments were helpful. I really don't have an issue, though. You know, some of their comments were, there's a McDonald's over here. There's another McDonald's down the street. To me, while that's, you know, interesting and it impacts potentially, you know, their decision to whether to locate a McDonald's so close to another McDonald's, that really isn't a consideration for me. That's not something that I, that's really the operator's decision, how close they want to locate McDonald's. I'm not sure that's really a community issue I'm not sure that's really a community issue that the Planning Commission would get involved in. And I don't frankly have a problem with the drive-through. I really don't. Traffic, if traffic is okay with it, then I, you know, frankly, I don't know if any of these fast-food restaurants, if they really make economic sense without a drive-through. And I've lived close to drive-throughs before, and I'm okay with the drive-through concept. I can't get over the hours. To me, the hours is a problem. And at this location, I've certainly been in favor of 24-hour operations before, but this is a, I think it would be wise for us to remember this is a neighborhood commercial district. You look around and it's not your, they're not in a big-box retail center like you get on Gilbert and Guadalupe where you got a Carl's Jr. there, you know, that's next to the Blockbuster that used to be there and is next to the bank and is also part of, you know, the Fresh &amp; Easy there. I mean, that's not what this is. This is a neighborhood commercial area that's surrounded by residential. So, and that's why I asked, would you rather have, you know, how would you feel if we did a 24-hour, if, for a use permit, that granted, you know, I would be okay with the other things, I'm not okay with, and I certainly don't think the neighbors in Strattlin Shadows envisioned, you know, people buying food at 3:00 in the morning, driving through right there, and I just don't think that's the location for that. So that's why I asked the applicant, how would you feel about, would you rather have a denial or an approval without the hours, which was the same as a denial? So, you know, for those reasons, I'm not in favor of this proposal. I understand the applicant's argument, like, we'll only be open 24 hours if the market demands that. There's plenty of things that the market would demand that we still, that's why we have a use permit, even though the market may demand it, it may not be in the best interest of the community, and that's why it comes back for a use permit. So while that's a great economic argument, we do have a planning process, because although there may be people that get the munchies at 3:00 in the morning in that area, that doesn't mean that it's right for the community. So I would not be in favor of this proposal. I would be in favor of a modified proposal, but that is not acceptable to the applicant. So I do not envision myself approving this.
Thank you. Anybody want to go next? Commissioner Bianchi?
Very similar to Commissioner Fuller. I mean, when we look at the land development code, it identifies the uses, identifies the hours of operation in a neighborhood commercial district, and often it's adjacent to residential, and that's why we do it. The applicant has made modifications to make this a more agreeable proposal, and that is acknowledged, but the applicant's requesting hours of operation not typically seen next to adjacent residential, and they've had to put together a set of evolving plans to try to mitigate these issues. So, you know, the applicant's narrative explains how all these new restaurant requests are indeed 24-hours, and the other operation, or the other McDonald's I could find in Gilbert via their website and the town zoning are all located in larger, more intense commercial districts. That was one of the questions I asked the applicant, just to see if he knew of any examples that he could cite. You know, this specific location has residential multiple sides, and I think, as Commissioner Fuller said, a 24/7 fast-food operation on such a small lot has a lot of issues that need to be mitigated. So I guess in conclusion, this is not a precedent I wish I'd want to set for similar permit requests, and in my opinion, the facts of finding have not been met, specifically the second and fourth findings. So I would not be in favor of it for 24/7, as Commissioner Fuller said.
Thank you, Commissioner Bianchi. Commissioner Steiger?
This is one of those things that is very challenging, and I find this challenging. I live in Power Ranch, which isn't too far from this intersection, and there is a McDonald's there, and it's not, I don't think it's neighborhood commercial, I bet it's shopping center.
Shopping center.
Yeah. However, it abuts four, four houses, four lots, and the lots, the actual lots themselves are a lot closer to the drive-through. The housing buildings are about equidistant from what I see there. That drive-through is seven by 24. Commissioner Peterson just looked it up and checked on it. So from a perspective, I think the applicant's done an excellent job as the staff and during study, not, excuse me, not study session, but during the previous zoning hearing, I think they've covered a lot of ground. I don't have a problem with the hours. I think it's the, just the nature of our society, and yes, we do have the ability to not pass it for that. The thing that I struggle with, and the one thing that I just can't seem to get, that the applicant can't mitigate, is the amount of traffic through the drive-through and the impact, even though the U-turns, et cetera, may be absolutely legal, that's where I finally understand the intensity of the use and recognize that there are other uses that would be less intense. But I think all the other things, the noise, they've shown clearly that there are no issues. I can tell you, having served on the board at Power Ranch, that we never have had any issues from residents that asked how to get in touch with the town for issues of noise, issues of smell, trash, problems from any of the other things that were suspect for this location, but unfortunately, I can't get past the traffic issue, so I can't support this.
All right. Commissioner Ayler?
Well, I'm in agreement with a part of both of you. Is, I guess, the intensity of a 24/7 in a neighborhood community would be, would be pretty heavy of use on a Friday night and Saturday night when you're having probably the peak of a 24/7 use, or maybe even on a Tuesday. But I don't think the neighborhood, and I agree that in looking at a use in a neighborhood shopping area, that just becomes something I wouldn't want to start opening up for everyone. And then the U-turn, I just have a major issue. If we got one in a peak hour of like 162 cars, and you took a third of that, that's like 50 cars that's going to be U-turning in that area, and that's almost one per minute, and that's one at least every cycle of the light. So that intensive of a use, it just doesn't work for me in a neighborhood community. So that's my.
Vice Chairman, that leaves you.
The applicant's heard everything that I had to say during the variance hearing last month, so I'm not going to belabor all of this. I agree with a little bit of everything that's been said. The hours are definitely a problem for NC in that location, and I'll just leave it at that. I think everybody knows where I stand on that way.
All right.
Chairman Whitman, I certainly apologize at this late date. The applicants have indicated a possible compromise, 24/7, two days a week or four days a week. They are open to discuss that if it's going to make any difference.
So you're saying a compromise to allow 24-hour operations on either two or four days a week?
Right. Friday, Saturday.
Busiest nights.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Chairman, I, gosh, I hate, that would have been really helpful about 20 minutes ago.
Right.
You know?
When you specifically asked that question?
Yeah, I mean, I'd certainly like to hear the neighborhood's thought on that. I don't know.
They're not going to re-answer that.
Yeah. This is, you've closed the public hearing.
They're pretty clear.
I'm not sure. That's up to you, Chairman. Specifically, again, why I asked that question a half hour ago.
Right.
You know, so.
I mean, it's still up to the purview of the board. If we decide to
No question.
Approve the case, we can approve it with a change in hours or a restriction in hours of operation for specific days and for specific times, notwithstanding what the applicant has asked for. So we can still do that. I think the problem that we're having is that we've all, we've asked the question specifically before we began our discussion, received our answer, and then now we've pretty much concluded our thoughts, or the majority of our thoughts. I guess I'm open to what the other commissioners feel.
Was the request for 24/7 on the weekends?
That's my understanding. Friday and Saturdays. The highest peak hours.
Obviously, when it would be busiest, and if there was going to be any adverse effect to the neighborhood, it would be probably when they're busiest on the weekend, so I don't know how that corrects the situation.
I agree. My personal view is that I don't feel that this is the best location for this particular use. I'm certainly, have been known to be pro-development where it's appropriate. However, I want to give kudos to the applicant for the many site plan revisions they've made and the accommodations they've tried to make to the neighbors and to staff and to try and fit this type of use in the best way that they could at this particular location. However, given the high intensity of this particular use, the number of cars that it generates on not only an hourly basis but on a daily basis, the hours of operations that are proposed, even though they may request 24-hours on a Friday and a Saturday and maybe limit that, it's still 24-hours, probably their peak days, and so the issue, I think, still remains, at least for me. I take issue to the location, also the trash enclosure. There's not really probably anywhere else on the site that you can really put it. It's as far away, I think, as you can get from the neighbors without being in the drive lanes. However, it is close to the neighborhood, and based on the type of use that it is and the food produced there and the associated smell produced there, it is substantially different than, I think, the commercial that was previously proposed at that location for that trash enclosure. I know that the applicant had made reference, said it's in the same location. Well, it is, but it's very different types of uses that would be using, I think, that trash enclosure. The traffic is a huge concern to me, again, especially with the medians that restrict the turning movements along both the arterial streets. So I know that there are four conditions, actually, my iPad just gave out on me here, the beauty of technology, but I unfortunately don't think that this particular application or use meets all four findings that we're required to meet in order to approve a use permit application. And so therefore, I also will be recommending denial. So with that, does anybody want to start with a motion? Commissioner Fuller? Call you chairman again?
Give me a second here. Hold on. All right. I got it. All right. Maybe, yeah. Gosh darn it. Yeah, you got it. Just might have chipped out. There we go. Thank you. All right. I recommend, or I move, that the required findings are not met and deny UP 12-03 McDonald's Restaurant a request for conditional use permit as set forth in our staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a recommendation of denial by Commissioner Fuller, a second by Vice Chairman Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this passes with a denial of six to zero. Thank you, everybody, for coming down and participating. And we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which I believe is the last item on our agenda. It looks like everybody's still staying for this one, too. Item number 24, which is the UP 12-05, it's a conditional use permit for approximately 1.2 acres or 1.12 acres of real property located at 1221 North Greenfield Road to allow a banquet facility in the single-family 43 zoning district, subject to conditions to limit the days and hours of operations. And we'll welcome Mr. Al Ward again.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman Whitman and members of the Planning Commission. I'm just looking for my PowerPoint. Okay. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a banquet facility. It's located on Greenfield Road, south of Baseline. It's called VVV LLC, and this shows the entire mile of Greenfield Road, which is located here, the site's where the arrow is. It's approximately the midpoint between the two. This was actually considered previously and continued from the September 5th Planning Commission meeting. Baseline all the way to the north and Guadalupe all the way to the south. This is the location, 1.12 acres. It's located immediately north of the Spirit of Joy Lutheran Church. The site is here with a blue roof, and the church is located immediately to the south. Greenfield Road to the west side, Val Vista Lakes, Tangalwood Cove Unit Number Two to the west of Greenfield Road, and off to the south and east is the Carriage Park Estates residential area. The site itself has a zoning of SF 43, off to the west at Val Vista Lakes, SF 7. Carriage Park Estates to the south is SF 15. So all these areas in here are single-family lots on one acre or greater, and higher density to the west and somewhat higher density, half-acre lots to the southeast. This is the site plan. Access to the site would be off of Greenfield. There's two components to this. There's the existing residence and the proposed barn, which is the banquet facility. There's a new parking lot being proposed. The site will have access to the area to the south, but that's primarily for trash and emergency fire purposes. There's the residence with a lawn in the front. The parking lot hasn't been constructed yet with our backs to Greenfield. This is the barn, which would be the banquet facility off to the right. A little bit closer, look at it, it's 3,500 square feet in area. The facility would use parking onsite as well as shared parking through a shared parking agreement with the Spirit of Joy Lutheran Church immediately to the south. Event should be held within the barn, and there's also between the barn immediately north and to the east side of the house to the property line is a 7,000-square-foot grass area. So this is where the event would be. Be anniversaries, wedding receptions, meetings, birthdays, any kind of public assembly, any kind of gatherings like that. Shows you some of the distances from the adjoining properties. From the actual barn itself, it's 320 feet from the barn over to Val Vista Lakes off to the west. The Carriage Park Estates is off to the south and east, 230 feet from edge of property. That's across the Spirit of Joy parking lot and across the canal to the south, and that's the separation. Everything else around the immediate site is, as I mentioned, large lots residential. The applicant has received letters of support from the immediate property owner to the north, east, and of course, the Spirit of Joy Church to the south. I mentioned the zoning, SF 43, Carriage Park off to the southeast, 270 feet, Tangalwood Cove off to the west, 200 feet on the west side of Greenfield. Spirit of Joy Church itself is 2.5 acres. Now, as far as an operations point of view, the banquet facility will operate 10 to 10 daily, except for Wednesdays and Sundays. They would coordinate that with the church. Obviously, they don't want to have any conflicting parking or events, and that's part of the scenario. The church wouldn't be holding events when the banquet facility would, and vice versa. There is a caretaker facility manager onsite to oversee the events, ensure proper conduct of guests, no food preparation on the site, it's all catered events, 21 parking spaces onsite, 73 over at the church with the administrative use permit that was granted, providing shared parking, total of 94 spaces available. Access, as I mentioned, directly to the west. There's no direct access from Houston to the south, even though there is potential access for emergency vehicles. Again, sticking with the operations point of view, the applicants have indicated they would provide a parking lot monitor and also a traffic coordinator. Those two people, or those two people associated with the facility would be there to monitor where you would be pulling in, monitor where you'd be parking, and directing pedestrians not through the site or between the sites, but back to the sidewalk, which is the safest way along Greenfield. No live bands are being proposed. They do support individual performers only. DJ or recorded music only, and that would be contained in the barn. They're saying that the music levels outside in the large grass area would be kind of similar to background dinner music. It's certainly not going to be loud thumping music as, you know, as a situation. No open bar is being proposed, and the applicant would be providing contact information to anyone using the facility or anyone of the adjoining neighbors. If there would be any kind of problem, they would prefer that, you know, have them contact the manager of the operation directly to kind of assist in any kind of behavior or anything like that, any kind of client contact would be an issue. The use permit criteria, not detrimental, 3,500-square-foot banquet facility and parking is available, no operation on Wednesdays and Sundays. From a general plan point of view, the residential land use criteria appears to conform with these, and this provides for a variety of types of uses in residential districts. You know, obviously, we have residential, we have churches, we have schools, we have other types of uses, including banquet facilities, subject to meeting the criteria of a use permit. Separation distances from any of the residences are at least 100 feet, and again, those closest in have already provided consents. DJ with recorded music only, no outside. There'd be no live music other than bands. Anyway, I think I've kind of gone over that. No bands, and only speakers along, only speakers would be provided in the grass area would be at comparable levels to dinner music, background music. There has been a lot of neighborhood involvement on this. Original access concerns, which were at the September 5th meeting, have been addressed. The Houston Avenue residents have met with the applicant at a neighborhood meeting following that Planning Commission meeting, and the address, the issue has been addressed and resolved, which would be providing an adequate improved access for Houston Avenue at Greenfield Road. That the town of Gilbert has agreed to, that that's a safety concern. They are addressing that, but by providing an M42 standard driveway approach, which would meet the requirements. Minimum 20-foot-wide level piece of ground where you're coming in across the sidewalk, and that would be done within approximately six weeks, from what we understand. We've received approximately 65 letters, 70 letters, 30 of these are opposed, and 40 of these are in support, letters, emails, and I provided all of those to the Planning Commission. In addition, there's a petition that was circulated and received in opposition, 150 names on that, and that's been provided to the Planning Commission as well, from residents in the area feeling that this would be an adverse impact on that proposal. Carriage Park and Val Vista Lakes are HOAs, have submitted letters of opposition. So staff recommendation, we feel that the proposed use is deemed suitable, will not have an adverse impact on the adjoining properties. Again, they've done a lot of efforts to mitigate this. There's a suitable separation distances between this use and the residents in the adjoining subdivisions. Hours of operation 10 to 10, no Sundays or Wednesdays, no cash bar, no open bar, I should say, no live bands. Manager facility onsite to oversee, parking monitor, traffic controller. We feel that the four criteria are met. It conforms with the SF 43 district facility for requirements for banquet facility, and staff And staff is recommending approval of the application. I'd be pleased to answer your questions and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Steiger?
Al, do you have a map? Or could you show me where the distribution of folks who were for and folks who were against this came on? Because I know that there had been a change in this since the study session and since the neighborhood meetings.
I do not have a specific map like that. The applicants, I believe that, in speaking with the neighbors, those in opposition have indicated where many of the residents in opposition are. All I can say is the three immediate neighbors around the site are in support of it. The three adjacent, a lot of the opposition is coming from Carriage Park. And a lot of the opposition is coming from the Valvista Lakes subdivision to the west.
That helps me understand, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bianchi?
Al, I'm wondering if you can answer this question. One of the questions I had was the church that they're working out the parking agreement with, that I guess already went through administrative approval. Is there anything that precludes them from having these types of events? Similar events, if they did receptions or anything like that at that location?
Commissioner Bianchi, no, not really. A church would be able to have, you know, certainly hold a wedding and certainly hold public events associated with that. It's not specifically, you know, a banquet facility, but they have public events associated with that. So yes, it could be, you know, if it wasn't every, you know, five times a week or something, probably.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else have questions for staff? All right, thank you, Mr. Ward. We'll invite the applicant up to give his presentation. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Thank you for your time. Adam Baugh, Withy Morris, 2525 East, Arizona Biltmore Circle. I appreciate your time tonight. I know you've heard this case before and I hope to be not repetitive of some of the facts you've heard in the past. I certainly appreciate your role as planning commissioners. I'm empathetic to the concerns that the neighbors have shared. I hope they'll see, and I hope you'll see tonight, how we've been able to address all those concerns. And in fact, I hope you'll see that we've probably gone above and beyond what normally is expected of applicants in this matter. This is a unique site. It's located on Greenfield Road. As you can see, this is a view of the residence, and this is a view of the barn. The properties highlighted on this map. And what's unique about this is, over time, land planning, land uses evolve. Back when this is planned, you can see a lot of county island properties. It was appropriate for the area. But as developments come in, as communities have been master-planned, you can see how they've hopscotched around. But somehow, these county properties have remained in their current, in their existing condition. Maybe it's because it was hard to do an assemblage, or maybe it's because they were individually owned. But as you see, you have these leftover properties. And what's interesting about this is whereas Greenfield Road used to be smaller, and maybe a couple, a lane less, and maybe dirt road on the side. As it's becoming a major arterial street and as development has passed it, a lot of these residential remnant pieces, you know, acre-plus properties, no longer are practically used for residential purposes. And that's why you see a number of these businesses that front, right onto our Greenfield Road, convert into non-residential type of uses. If you were to drive down there, you would see the barn next door to us that had converted to a church. You'll see other private residences converted into churches, preschools, charter schools. And then, of course, you have the larger school up the street. The point in being, and when you have properties like this along major arterial streets, over time, things change. Marlene Jolly is part-owner of the property. And unlike those other properties, she's resisted the temptation to convert to a commercial use. A commercial use that probably would be appropriate in this property in the other circumstance. Marlene Jolly lives in the house. She lives there 24/7, seven days a week, 365 days a year with her 85-year-old mother. And it's important to mention that because I know there's a perception this is a conversion to commercial use. But in fact, this is a residential use that will operate part-time with an accessory banquet facility. Here's the plan. I know Al already mentioned a little bit, but I thought it's important to highlight a couple of things. The way the residence is located and the barn and the courtyard somewhat insulate the site from noise travel. There's a secondary access that the town required of the applicant for Houston. That's not going to be an access used by patrons. It's just simply for emergency vehicles and refuse collection. What's interesting about the site is when Marlene purchased the property, the first thing she did, she's been decorating for years at events like this. And she knew how important it was to work with the neighbors. And so she went immediately to the next-door property owners. She sought their input. And she found that they were actually very supportive of the use. And then her next step was to go talk to the town. What's the town process require? What input does the town give? And not only meetings with planning staff, engineering staff, public works, streets, fire. They all came up with design considerations that she implemented into her plan. And they formulated a recommendation. They felt that this use was appropriate for the area. And she moved forward with her application, and it was a staff recommendation of approval. As you know, there was a hearing last month. There was an opportunity for Marlene and her partner Dennis to come and present their case. And up until that moment, they had no idea that there was any concern about the facility. There was a couple of neighbors who live on Houston Avenue. That's the street just south of us. They came to the hearing, and they all said one thing. "We support the use. We just have some concerns about the access." You see, it's an old county. I don't even know if it's a road, in fact. It's a private easement, but it's been used as a road. And the concern was about how two vehicles could come in and out at the same time, and if this would increase that level of activity. I think it was wise of this commission to recommend a continuance, which we appreciated. We had a chance to sit down and work with the Houston Avenue neighbors. They gave us great feedback. And the first thing we did after meeting with them was have a joint meeting with the engineering department. In that meeting with Mike Gillespie, we came to a conclusion that yes, that access point at Houston and Greenfield should be widened. The towns agreed to widen, I think, in approximately four to six weeks per the email I received from Mike. That's going to be 20-foot wide, ADA certified. And in fact, the broken water main that's depressed, that area will be repaired. So it's a great solution to address what the perceived conflict could otherwise have existed. The second thing that Houston neighbors said, they gave us some good feedback about how we could operate this facility. You see, as we had mentioned, Marlene had hosted some private events for her own family members and her closest friends. They weren't professional events. But it was very instructive to them. We got great feedback from the Houston neighbors. They talked about pedestrian traffic crossing Houston. They talked about lighting. They talked about better coordination. And with that feedback, we were able to operate and revise our operating plan. I'll get into that a little bit later on tonight. But let's talk about just how this thing works. I know there's been so many questions and concerns about this. And sometimes, I don't know if it's entirely accurate. But I think this is a great opportunity to just lay the facts as they exist accurately. We anticipate that there'll be 100, 200 people. Unfortunately, I think to our fault, there was a concern that there might be 400-plus people regularly all the time. That's because it was based on the traffic study. When our traffic engineer said this can have 96 cars, four people per car, that's how they came up with that number. But actually, we anticipate this being 100 to 200 people. If we're lucky, we would have more. We see this being primarily a Friday and Saturday type of activity. There may be an occasional weekday, but they'll never be on any Sundays or Wednesdays. And that's because we wanted to coordinate with the adjacent church property. We see that if they have events on those days, it's not wise that we have events on our facility. The operating hours, and this is, I think, something that may have also attributed to some of the misinformation areas, that would be 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And if I didn't know any better, I probably would have assumed that means 12 hours of constant activity. And the reason why I put that in there is because the town asked for it. The reality is, we anticipate the daytime hours simply just being for preparation. You know, vendors can come in, set up. But the events typically will occur in the evening hours. And so while I can't say it'll always be the case, I confidently say in the majority of circumstances, these events will occur primarily in the evenings. I know there was a thought about parking. How can you accommodate this many people? Well, let's talk about what the town code says. The town code requires you have 21 parking spaces for this type of facility, which we can provide onsite. We took it a step further and we realized, you know what, 21 might not be enough. So we executed a shared parking agreement with the church next door to give us an additional 73 parking spaces. That's 94. Now, I know there's a concern that's gone out in the neighborhood that people are going to park all the way south inside the Carriage Park subdivision. And then walk out, walk all the way up Greenfield Road and back to the facility. It's about a thousand-foot hike. I don't think that's going to happen. But if that were to happen on a worst-case scenario, we were able to work out agreement with overflow parking at the Desert View Baptist Church just up the street and the Grace Covenant Church just further to the south. I don't anticipate ever needing that. But if worst-case scenario existed, that's the possibility, and we could shuttle those people over. The second thing I heard was traffic coordination. And I think that was a concern mentioned by some of the commissioners here today. And so we spent some time trying to figure out what's a good solution. Actually, it turned out to be a little easier than I thought. Our traffic flow has actually been designed for easy access for all attendees. And we kind of broke it down into both an arrival scenario and a departure scenario. And the first thing we heard from meeting with neighbors, we had a couple of meetings with them, we realized, you know what, we should probably put forth a private traffic controller, someone that can direct traffic that is traveling on Greenfield Road, so they're not confused which parking lot to turn into, come into one, realize it's too full and go into the other. And so by having a private traffic controller, we can easily direct traffic to the appropriate spots. We can have a staff attendant, and we've already implemented this, in each parking lot. And the point in being that as people arrive to their spot, we want to be able to usher them safely back towards the facility. We also don't want people walking across the dirt road. We want them to use the city sidewalk, the town sidewalk. And so a staff attendant will be in that parking area, directing people back towards the sidewalk. And then again, as a result, there won't be any of that pedestrian access going across. One thing I heard, and I don't remember if it was Commissioner Ayler or perhaps Commissioner Whitman, but how do you have three driveways so close to each other? Surely, that's going to be a traffic impact concern. And I took that to heart. And we sat back and looked at the site, and we realized that's an easy way to address. Because there's 21 spaces on our current onsite facility, those spaces can be dedicated for event vendors, people who are there earlier in the day to set up and prepare. And then for the actual wedding party itself, who will come early enough to take photos. And then we'll be able to cone it off. And all activity and guests that will come to this facility will be able to use the church parking lot. We've even taken a step further, and we can provide a map and an address and every invitation for that measure. Of course, on departure, we also want to prevent people from walking out of the facility and back across the dirt road. So even though there's a secondary access point, we will have a staff member there directing everybody to the sidewalk. There'll be someone at the sidewalk to usher them across Houston. And there'll be somebody, again, in the parking lot to control, address any conduct that could be in that area. What I found, though, is that we've even gone a step further. From the neighbors, I heard a couple of things. We don't want to have live bands. There was a perception that there would be this loud element going on because I think another facility that existed adjacent to us years ago, when it was in the county. We also heard that we don't want music going on in the late hours. And so we've done a number of things now that wasn't in the original submittal. I think that's the benefit of working with neighbors and trying to understand their concerns. So as a result, we've limited the aspect of having live bands. We've agreed to cut off our music at 10:00 PM. We've agreed to staff monitor our parking areas. We've agreed to the private traffic control. We've actually posted some additional signage on Houston itself, so it says local traffic only. We've also agreed to have some signage along the right-of-way, so people will know exactly where to park. We've already installed some additional lighting on the facility. And in fact, we've seen how it's already paid dividends in working with our neighbors on Houston. And we, as I mentioned, we're going to have parking information in all our invitations. And more important, I think there was a comment, I read an email. "How can you exist here at the St. Diane Church House facilities?" And as I mentioned, we're not going to have any competing events at the same night they do. And the last thing I heard was alcohol, which I thought was some of an interesting comment. I think the fear was if we're having events 12 hours a day, seven days a week, that's a lot of alcohol going on. One of the comments I heard was, "Well, people are going to drive into our neighborhood after they leave your facility." A second comment I heard was, "There are schools up and down this street, and we need to protect the children." Well, I appreciate the concerns. I don't think they're as urgent as they compel. What I can tell you is that we anticipate, we'd love to have the opportunity to have alcohol here. I think it's probably 20% to 30% of the potential revenues. But we said to the neighbors, "Look, if you'll support us, we'd be willing to concede on this point." And as a result, even though they weren't willing to participate with us in this process to work together, despite that, we still moved forward and amended our application. We agreed to have no open bar alcohol service. That doesn't mean there won't be a champagne toast for the bride and groom, but certainly, there will be no alcohol served. Now, there's a lot of information out there. There's all these emails in for and against. There's 150 petitions. And if I knew it was a battle of petitions, I would have certainly done my job as well. I don't think it's, all it is is a testament of how well someone can circulate petitions. It's not a popular vote. In fact, in your code standard, as members and stewards of this town, you understand that there's a legal standard to satisfy. And so let me work through this standard. The first part is, is there any detriment to the health, safety, or general welfare of this area? The answer is no. This is completely safe. It's self-contained in the building. It's on, it's not 24 hours a day. It's not seven days a week. It's on sporadic occasions. And Houston driveway's been widened to accommodate traffic. And there's great operating procedures in place to address any potential concerns. Does it conform to the general plan? Absolutely. The general plan category is a residential zero to one. This use is permitted per that general plan. Does it conform to the zoning code? Yes, it does. Land Development Code, the Land Development Code specifically says that this use can be permitted as a conditional use in this category. It meets all your spacing, all your setback standards, all your development standards. And as we came through this process and had pre-op meetings, the town departments all have had an opportunity to review this request, and they have no concerns. The last, and I think is probably the most important. Does it unreasonably interfere with the use and enjoyment of nearby properties? Now, what is unreasonably? That is substantial, that is a detrimental material impact. And so let's talk about that. We're not talking about, can you hear a little bit of noise? Is there a little bit of traffic? No, is it substantial, and is it materially detrimental? In this case, it is clearly not. It's only a few days, and it's only a few hours. And in fact, the town engineer, who analyzes traffic traveling down this road, has determined that it will have no impact whatsoever in a negative manner on this area. We even took it a step further, and we hired a private traffic engineer to go out and do a study himself, which I'll get into a little bit later, who also verified that not only our parking, but our circulation and our traffic pattern will not have a negative impact. In fact, it's important to highlight that this is a major arterial street. It's designed to support this use and a whole host of other uses up and down this property. As I mentioned already, we have great operating procedures in place. I thought we had a great ones to begin with. And we revised them even further to address those concerns. I don't need to go back over them again, but I will actually just highlight one thing. I believe this part-time banquet facility use actually preserves the residential area. And I'll say that because, as I mentioned, there's tremendous pressures in this area to convert to a full-time, non-residential use. You've seen it up and down this road for all these former county island properties, large remnant pieces. In this case, it's occupied by, owner occupied 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with an occasional part-time facility. There are tremendous benefits to this request. First of all, it's a great venue. If you ever have a chance to go see it, I think you'll be amazed how beautiful it is on the inside. But more importantly, there's an opportunity for increased Gilbert revenue. Yeah, something like this part-time doesn't necessarily create revenue directly itself, but there's many ancillary benefits. First of all, you have people coming in town to stay in Gilbert hotels because there are events in town. You have vendors, food providers who will cater this event. All those people provide not only tax dollars in this area, but shopping and things like that. This improves an existing building. And instead of demoing an old barn that really has no function or purpose on this property today, it actually preserves waste and makes meaningful use of the site. This promotes Gilbert and small business, but without all the negative impacts that normally come with commercial properties. It improves and beautifies this area along this major transportation corridor. And this application, as I mentioned already, preserves a residential character. And it resists the temptation to convert to a full-time commercial use. Most important, it meets all your town codes. All the adjacent neighbors right next door to us in support. And all the neighbors on Houston are in support. Most important, staff recommends approval. Why? This is their job. This is what they do all the time. They analyze, they understand land use planning, they understand zoning principles. And based on their years of experience and expertise, they see that this is a good, compatible use. This meets the standards of the CUP test, which is something I want to highlight. The purpose of a CUP test is not to ask, is this a use that's permitted in this zoning district? All these uses are permitted in this zoning district. The purpose of the CUP is to prescribe standards and guidelines to make these uses compatible. And because we've shown an ability to meet the code, and because the town staff recommends approval, because the adjacent neighbors recommend approval, we satisfy the legal standards. It's not necessarily a popularity contest, it's just a legal standard. Now, I know there's a number of people who'd like to speak, both for and against. I would like the opportunity to reserve, Madam Chair, if you would be so kind to extend, an opportunity for rebuttal. I will show later on how I've been able to address all their concerns. And I look forward to be able to share a little bit more of this presentation at an appropriate time.
Great, thank you, Mr. Baugh. Are there any questions for Mr. Baugh?
I do.
Commissioner Fuller?
Sir, I got just a couple of questions. One, I would like to follow up on something you said. You said, when you were talking about the intensity of the use, I'm not going to get your quote exactly right, but you said it would only be a few days a week. Was that stepped in? I didn't see that in the steps. Did you step to a couple of days a week in that? Explain that to me.
No, I didn't. No, the events, the request is for, it could be five days a week per the application. That's before you did. before each day. We don't have any Wednesdays, we don't have any Sundays. The other days could be available days. The reason why I say a couple of days a week is because Marlene's been doing this for 15 years. These events generally occur on the Fridays and Saturdays. There may be occasional weekday. The one thing that is stepped, though, is to the narrative that's on file today. The narrative on file clearly states that there will be no Wednesday or Sunday events.
Okay. Great. Thank you for clearing that up for me. And then the next one is, you kind of went into it, it was the competing events. So you're saying, just so I understand, you're not saying we'll never have a competing event with the church. You're saying we'll step to have no events on a Wednesday or a Sunday. If the church wanted an event on a Thursday, and you had an event on a Thursday, would you have a competing event then in that scenario?
You know, that's a good question. I hate to speak out over, but I think I can confidently say that when the church has their events, we will not be having our events. Is that an accurate statement? Yes.
I'm just trying to, I'm just, in my mind, I'm trying to figure out how that would work. You know, it's, you know, we obviously can't step anything to the church. I would probably feel uncomfortable stepping that a tie goes to the church, you know? I'm just not sure. So in our minds, while I think we would, you know, I would prefer you, obviously, to police yourself on that issue, I think the commissioners probably have to look, either A, you have to step it that a tie goes to the church, which is, I think, gives an awful lot of leverage to the church, or B, you have to evaluate this as if there could be a competing event if the church suddenly got into the Tuesday bingo night business, you know, or whatever it is. So I would just, I would think about that, you know, evaluate this as if, you know, while the church does their events Wednesday to Sunday, things change. So unless you're willing to step the applicant to a no competing events with the church, which gives the church, obviously, a lot of power over the applicant, you could run into the scenario where you would have competing events. And I totally understand where the applicant's, most of their business is on Friday or Saturday. I completely understand that. What happens if we run into the scenario where the church started getting into weddings on Friday and Saturday night? What do you do there? You know? What happens if they have Saturday night, a Friday night fish fry, or whatever it is? You know, you could run into a fairly difficult scenario there fairly quickly. And I'm not sure, maybe I'll ask you, since you're the one standing there, how would you resolve that scenario?
Very good question, Chairman Fuller. Well, first of all, I think we have a great relationship working with the church. Part of that shared parking agreement talks about when we can have events at the same time. I will say that the concern is about necessarily having events at the same time, but is there enough parking to accommodate events at the same time? I don't, there'll never be an occasion where we have events on Sunday or Wednesday, first and foremost. But if there was at a time where a church wanted to hold a Bible study on the, I don't know, what could ever occur on a Tuesday night, for example, we have the ability to have parking agreements with the other two churches in the area. So if there was a need for a competing event, there still is a parking solution available.
Okay. I think that's a fair answer.
And that's really what it comes down to. Is there enough parking to accommodate both sites at the same time? We'll never have competing events. If there ever was a fear that you have, we can easily address that by having agreements already in place with some of the other facilities in the area.
Do you have those agreements in place?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that's a fair answer.
I also kind of think personally that if I were planning a wedding there, I would probably book it pretty far in advance, and that would give ample time to, for the place to coordinate, I think, with the church to make sure that there weren't a competing event that would occur that evening. I don't think it's, those types of events usually aren't impromptu, and so I would assume and hope that that coordination would begin at the time that the event was trying to be scheduled.
Right. And I completely understand that. I just didn't want us to, while everybody, the church and the proposed use, everybody gets along now, you know? In my business, people don't always get along, is what I see, and so when we evaluate things, let's just make sure that, you know, we understand that there may be competing, yeah, there may be competing uses. While everybody's happy now, they may not get along in the future, and you would need to be comfortable with a competing use. I think the applicant has done a very good job explaining how he would remedy that competing use, because I don't think it's fair to step that, say, the tie goes to the church, because I just don't think that would work.
I think the first thing that happens, we'd be excommunicated from the church, and then...
Okay.
Any further questions for the applicant? No? Thank you, Mr. Ba. All right. We have a number of comment cards here tonight to speak for and then again, opposed to the item. I did notice that in some of the comment cards, there was a gentleman who said that he was going to speak for a few members. I don't know if that's the case. Is this the opposition? Since there are so many, and since we'd like to get through people, we'd like to see if you want to appoint somebody to speak for you. We'll give a little more time to somebody who may want to speak for those who are opposed to the item or in favor of the item. I think Stan Strom had listed on his comment card that he can speak for several in a group. All I would ask is that, and we'll go through each of these individually by name, but if you do choose to speak, we'll let Stan speak first, but if you do choose to speak, we ask that you comment upon something that hasn't already been discussed or brought up. You can just say you agree with the previous comments, but we would very much like it if you would not repeat the same comments over and over. If you have a different viewpoint that you'd like to bring, we definitely want to hear that. So with that said, we'd like to welcome up Stan Strom, who says that he's opposed to this item, wishes to speak, and if you could just again state your name and...
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Stan Strom. I'm a resident, 22 years in Gilbert, in Carriage Park Estates. For nine years, I shared the same diocese that you did, and for the last two years as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, during the time that it was the most tumultuous time in Gilbert's history as the number one fastest-growing city in the United States. We had hundreds of cases that lasted well past midnight. We even had to have police escorts out of this building at times because it was so contentious. So I'm not new to the fact that, and I'm not opposed to development, but I want to share with you, as a former commissioner, that there's a history on this property, and there's a history with this subdivision that's very unique, that you need to hear and understand the real story behind what the applicant's attorney would prefer to same as, or classify as negotiation. Because you're talking to somebody who negotiated the best during the time that we had tumultuous growth here, and we had a big challenge to try to meet the needs. And we said no many, many times. And when I look out at this beautiful community that we've raised our children in, I'm very proud the fact that we said no on so many occasions, contrary to staff, contrary to the applicants, and it's why this is such a phenomenal community. There may be other people that want to share other views. I would say, if I'll go over my time, maybe what you do is ask people if they would give up some of their time as well. And I'll make my, my comments are going to talk about the history. I'll make them as quick as I can. Is that fair enough? I want to talk about Carriage Park. It's the first half-acre lot subdivision in Gilbert. And this spring will mark the 20th anniversary that the first families like me made into that community. And the thing that's so unique about it is we're still there. 14 boys under the age of five, just on my little street. I've watched every one of them, except three, graduate from college. And so it's mi casa es su casa. We've looked out for the interests of others. The days they got on the bus as kindergartners, coaching Little League, watching all the dynamics for the last 20 years. So this is a very special subdivision, but it's not our first rodeo to a conditional use permit. So in 1986, when the Riddlingers built this barn, nobody objected, perfectly consistent with the agrarian theme of Gilbert. But then the Riddlingers wanted to do something different. So they purchased an 1860s Circa barn from Iowa and had it assembled in tongue and groove on the site that we now see as the Spirit of Joy Church. But that wasn't enough, because they wanted to have a barn boutique, and it was so successful that the seasonal use permit, that the staff said... Does somebody want to give up their time? Thank you. The staff told us neighbors, "You know what? This gives you an opportunity to say no, and if they violate the conditions of the use permit, we can reject it." So October brought the Halloween. Two weeks' respite, and we had a barn boutique with Thanksgiving. A two-week respite, and then we had a barn boutique with Christmas. Then we had a three-month respite, and at that particular time, then we did Easter. When they wanted to have weddings, that's when we said it got out of hand. And when it was so evident that Carriage Park and another, a number of others were going to have the conditional use permit revoked, the Riddlingers then went out and acquired the Shenandoah Creek Mill from Virginia, and they built it a half-mile from here on a commercially-zoned 2.2-acre site that has a shared use permit with a charter school, and it's in a very appropriate use for weddings and banquet facilities. That's what it was supposed to do, is create that rustic look, the garden idea, the photos, the whole deal. So then they sold the church, or their original residence, the barn, to the church, and we had no say in it, because a church, as you know, can go into any zoning category. They've been a good neighbor, because they don't have bingo nights, they don't have wedding nights, and they've been very sympathetic to it. So my objection is the fact that we feel like we're the villains to say no when we've already gone through that rodeo before, when the roads had cars parked on both sides, all the way down Greenfield and into our subdivisions. And when they say they have provided for overflow to the Baptist church, that's what they told us 15 years ago. And when it rained, and there was mud, and they had the policeman out there with all the stuff, "I want you to drive on Greenfield. Try it in the morning, try it in the afternoon, and try it at night." Because there's times when you can't make a left, and there's times when you can't make a right, because it's a major arterial. It's defined as a minor, but it's a major arterial. traffic, incompatible use, is the thing that I object to the most. I have with me a recorded document from Maricoma County Recorder's Office. It's the deed of trust for this property. While they may indicate that they've been a long-term resident there, according to records, they closed in April of 2012. And it says in their deed of trust, occupancy, borrow, borrow, and there's a 50% ownership with this couple and a 50% ownership with another lady, shall occupy, establish, and use the property as borrower's principal residence within 60 days after execution of this security instrument, and shall continue to occupy property as borrower's principal residence for at least one year after the date of occupancy, unless lender agrees otherwise in writing.
Sir, sir, I hate to interrupt you, but that's really between the lender and the borrower on that. If they're violating the terms of their mortgage instrument, that's not something this commission would have...
That's exactly right, because they're coming to you tonight as a residential use when they purchase the property, R43, low-density residential, and they're trying to say what great citizens they've been to negotiate, when in fact, no is the best answer. It's a residential use that they bought it with, it's a residential use that they have, and there's no reason they have to tear down the barn and pretend like there's a problem. I want to say one thing regarding the uses that you have to consider. Noise. They've told you that they're going to pave the parking lot. Why would you take this beautiful grass area that's Gilbert's known for, put hardscape landscaping, reserve that for your staff, and then move all the traffic closest to our neighborhood who bought there 20 years ago with a promise that it was going to be low-density residential? And when the applicant tells you, quote, "This reserves the right to preserve this conditional use rather than seeking a more full-time commercial use," I don't buy it. I don't buy it. Because we bought with the idea that this was a residential neighborhood, and so...
I'm sorry, sir. Could you tell me, Madam Chair, could you tell me what, I didn't quite catch the part that you didn't buy? I want to make sure I understand that point. What was it that you weren't, you didn't ascribe to?
I don't buy the fact that you come in and the application said that they opened up escrow, and they went through the town of Gilbert, and they talked to the neighbors, and they filed an application. They closed escrow in April with a low-density residential property, R43. I don't buy the fact that we have to come back and be villains to say no, and have to then be put on defense like we were for the last 15 years with the use permits that didn't work before, and have to be the ones that care-take to the noise. I was at a recent wedding, and because they couldn't smoke in the venue, the outside parking lot looked like a smoker's, and the smoke was moving all over. They chatted late, and while they say they're going to close it at 10, they closed the building down, break the tables down, and it's midnight. Mi casa es su casa. The Baders, the Emerson's, the Toons, and everybody else on that street, because they're impacted, I'm impacted. I ask you to deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shum. Can you hold on for just a second, please? We may have some questions or comments for you. Commissioners? Commissioner Fuller?
Yeah, I just had a, you know, this is more of a comment, but I'll certainly give you an opportunity to respond. You know, I was, I'm a bit surprised, I appreciate the history, that's something I did not know. I'm a bit surprised by your objection to the use, because what we heard the last month was, I thought most of the residents made a point to say that they didn't object to the use in a vacuum. They had problems with safety, they, you know, we heard lots of examples of people walking out on the street, and it was more, hey, can we maybe get Houston paved? I don't, I, you know, I can check the minutes, but I certainly remember, I certainly don't remember anybody saying, "I've got a problem with the fact that there's a banquet facility here." I don't remember that, and if there were, it was one person, maybe. I'll certainly give you an opportunity...
Well, I will tell you that, Chairman, or Commissioner, it's because we weren't notified. And I take objection to the fact that they signed the affidavit, and in my case, they violated the way that, the proper notification. How can you file and get a permit from the hearing of variance officer to include the church as a parking lot and then say that the property, the existing property, is the one further to the north, without including the church parking lot in the total site? You take the 30, the 300-degree or the feet measurement from the new property line, which would have definitely included more neighbors. So it was only because we found out afterward and made a diligent effort to finally get to the facts of what was going on here, that we then found out that this is going to be the same type of thing. If you look at the application they have in their boutiques, it says no open bar, but it doesn't say no alcohol. All these little things that make a wedding thing that goes late into the evening, and the noise in a parking lot, the chatter, the smoking, it all carries. And by paving the lot in their property and moving it to the church, it puts a burden on us, and you cannot say that those four things have been perfectly satisfied, because it impacts us. And the traffic, I'm going to let other people address that. 50, 55 is the norm on Greenfield. Trying to get ingress and egress in this, even with this revised site plan, you're looking at a major problem. It impacts us. And we had the gumption in the early years to say no, and I'm asking you, that you hear the history, to think real loud when you talk to everybody else here. The passion that I have is because we've grown up with these kids. The passion that I have is because we've grown up with these kids, we've stayed in this community, we know everybody, and we want to stay there, and if Julie Bader and the rest of them have to hear music at 12:00 at night, it's too much. We didn't negotiate that. We didn't ask for it, and we shouldn't have to be put on notice to let you know when it's too loud, and when there's too much traffic, and when the person backs the truck up and it goes beep, 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 beep at midnight to get the tables. What do the Baters do? What if it is on a Wednesday night, and they have a really important meeting on Thursday? See, it's not about Friday and Saturday. And for the life of me, I don't know how the staff can approve, disapprove, the previous case arterial corner, and then this one mid-block approve it. To paraphrase Robert Frost, "The road not taken. Two roads diverged in the yellow wood, and standing there long I stood, wondering which one to take. I took the one last traveled by, and it's made all the difference." Saying no will make all the difference to us. Thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments for the applicant, or the Commissioner Ayler?
You hadn't mentioned back when it was a boutique that they had traffic controllers. Did they have traffic controllers?
They had cops, traffic controllers. It didn't matter.
So back 15 years ago, they did have controls?
They turned it down. There's, the files are full of problems and violations. The irony is the same people that built this property and built the church have built the wedding chapel right here that works perfect. I don't see why you need another one, and there's about 15 or 20 other wedding chapels and banquet facilities in Gilbert.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? Thank you. All right, we will go through a few of these. Let me know, as I call your name, whether you had wished to give up some of your time to Mr. Strom, and if he addressed some of the issues that are concerns that you had previously had, and wish to turn your time over to him and not speak. I have a Marcy Peterson, says I'm opposed and wish to speak. Do you wish to speak? Okay, please come on up and state your name and city of record. I'm sorry? We'll give you just a couple of minutes, okay? Thank you.
Hey, my name is Maricela Peterson. They call me Marcy.
Can you speak into the mic a little more? Thank you.
Okay, I live on Gemini, which is right, right here, and I just wanted to let you know that there was an overwhelming opposition from Carriage Park...
We're going to need your name for the record.
Oh, Maricela Peterson. Overwhelming opposition in the Carriage Park community, and a few from Val Vista, right over here. And we and a couple of neighbors went out door-to-door informing everybody that we could about this business proposal, and 115 households signed the petition against the banquet facility, and only three were in support of it. And the three are in red, and everybody else in green was opposed to it. So I gather, we all gathered 167 signatures from the residents opposing the venue, and the remaining houses that are blank, they didn't open their doors. There was a mention that there were many letters sent to the commission in support of the banquet facility, but where do those folks live? Certainly not in close proximity to where the banquet facility is. I just want to say the business idea is great, but not in a residential zone, not by us. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hang on just a second? Are there any questions for Ms. Peterson?
I just have a real quick question. Could you point on that, where the banquet facility, my eyes just are not...
Right there.
Okay. Great, all right.
And then here's... Now I can see the red.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. That took a lot of work to knock all those doors.
Yes, I'm sure it was.
Not sure I've ever seen that, somebody put together an exhibit like that. It's quite impressive.
And I do have a question for you. I don't know if anybody else has questions for you, but when you knocked on the door to gather signatures, what information was provided to the homeowners? Because sometimes it's, it's very easy to get opposition signatures, it's not as easy to get support, depending on the information provided.
We just told them that a banquet facility was trying to get a special permit so that they can operate six days out of the week, not on Sundays, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So, you know, the impact in traffic, the impact in noise, and most of them were really supportive because we like the peace and quiet. We like to be able to be in our backyard, you know, when it's peaceful, barbecuing, without the noise and having to hear it, because it really carries.
So you told them that it was six days a week and not five days a week per the application?
Well, they, I think, changed it so that it's Wednesday and Sunday that they're not going to do it, but when we knew about it, it was the six days of the week.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Steiger?
Yeah, one thing I'm kind of confused about is if there are no bands, what is the, what is the source of the noise besides music that is, that has bothered you or you believe will bother you in the future?
Well, I believe there's going to be amplified music, so like a DJ wise, and I think that usually carries.
And what about road noise from Greenfield? Do you hear that, or are you just kind of, it's just, it's normal now?
No, I mean, there is road noises, but I think if there's to have any venues there at 10:00 p.m. during the week, when we're trying to get to sleep, and we have school-aged children, that's going to be, that impacts us. So I just don't think it's appropriate, because it is residential zone.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ayler?
Yeah, I just had a quick question.
Sorry, Ms. Peterson, one more question. Sorry, you can't get loose that quick.
I just also wanted to know when you went to, when was it done? Because there was a neighborhood meeting. Was it before or after that last neighborhood meeting? The actual...
We were actually going door-to-door, can't remember the date. I guess for the past two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
So it was continuous for the last two weeks? So were you updated from that last meeting that I actually attended and was listening to the concerns of the neighborhood? I was just wondering if you took in some of that meeting when you went further on the last two weeks?
Yeah, well, from the meeting, I heard there was going to be up to like 400 people at the venue. They addressed the parking issue, but they hadn't mentioned that they were going to use the other two churches.
Well, they did mention, I was at the meeting, so...
Oh, okay.
So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I also have Scott Peterson. I assume that you're with your wife, and she's covered your topics. Great, thank you. Richard Andrews, do you still wish to speak? You marked it as opposed and wish to speak. I take that as a yes if you're walking up. Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
Richard Andrews. My address for this evening's purposes is 1600 East Lakeside Drive. I'm the general manager of Val Vista Lakes, and would like to speak.
Can you set the timer, please?
We have 1,968 homes in Val Vista Lakes, so I'll only take a second for each one of those instead of three minutes, if that's okay with the commission and...
We don't have enough time, sorry. So you're going to have to condense it a little further than that.
Well, that's why I said I'll only speak...
No further than that.
1,938 seconds instead of three minutes per. Thank you for the opportunity to address the commission this evening. Hopefully, you've had the opportunity to review the letter that was prepared in opposition to this application. I'd like to also review a little bit more of the history for just a moment, and then speak to a couple of other things. This particular piece of property, as Mr. Strom has pointed out, has been rather famous because of the bazaars that were held in the past, and the huge impact that it had on the neighborhood, and the huge impact it had in the area. I believe between the previous staff report and the one that I got subsequent to that, that there have been two bazaars that have been added to the equation, and I don't believe that the spokesperson for the applicant this evening pointed that out. We would be very, very opposed to the bazaars, and that's the past history of how those events were conducted in this area, and the impact from a traffic standpoint, from a safety standpoint, and from an event standpoint. I also understand that the applicant has already distributed a leaflet saying that there will be a bazaar in October prior to the issuance of this permit, which I find a little curious. And then I also want to segue into the fact that they are having events at this facility already. I'd like to distribute some pictures from the event on Saturday so that you can see the impact of the traffic that has taken place on the site.
Sir, you'll need to kind of wrap up your comments, please. And what is your name, sir? Wayne Mulholland?
The four commercial events or activities that, or non-residential activities that take place along the east side of Greenfield Road started when this was a county island. The daycare center to the north came in just south of the school. I don't know that you can see those very clearly on your map up there. And then the church came in, and then the school, and then a second church came in. The churches are permitted uses in any zoning case. The daycare center was allowed into the county island, and the initial school application was made when it was a county island. Both of those were grandfathered when it was zoned into the town of Gilbert. There is no existing commercial neighborhood or commercial zone anywhere along Greenfield Road, except on the major intersection corners at Val Vista, or excuse me, at Greenfield and Baseline, and at Greenfield and Guadalupe. And you'll notice that when you look at those corners, that they are substantially vacant, that there's not been a demand for commercial activity along that right-of-way. And I believe that what this in fact does by granting a conditional use permit creates spot zoning in direct opposition to the town of Gilbert voter-adopted general plan. I don't care how many conditions that you put on it, this is a commercial use. And I find that curious, because in a case of a use permit prior to this, on 1.57 acres, you turn down a use that would have less traffic impact for a number of permanent people that would occupy the space than this would, and this site is not a standalone site. It has to have a cross-access easement and a cross-access parking permit in order to be able to accommodate enough parking spaces on 1.21 acres to be able to have a commercial use even five days a week. And also, I would suggest that the last time that the planning commission in the town of Gilbert agreed with an applicant that a 21-space parking lot was prettier than grass that is flood-irrigated, I don't remember when that happened, and I've attended many, many, many planning and zoning commissions, and I've attended many, many town council meetings. I would respectfully, just based on the desire to change the zoning through a conditional use permit, suggest that this does not, on a prima facie basis, meet the requirements that are set for this conditional use permit, and that I would respectfully request that you deny it.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Are there any questions for Mr. Andrews? None, thank you.
I also have a copy, and I can leave it with you, or we'll leave it with staff. There are 12 other venues that provide this type of service within the town of Gilbert, not counting the restaurants that have meeting rooms that will hold in excess of 100 people.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go through a few other names. If you could just indicate whether you wish to speak or not. I have Cheryl McCoy, says I'm opposed and wish to speak. Do you still wish to speak? Okay, we just asked that you limit your comments to things that haven't been already brought up. Your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. My name's Cheryl Peterson McCoy. My address is 1061 North Plymouth Court. I am the president of Val Vista Lakes HOA. What I'm going to address that Richard didn't address is, for the last five years, we have dealt with Dos Gringos. Now, while they are on Baseline and Higley and in Mesa, no one bothered to ask us if we minded if a bar, a venue, restaurant went in, which would have been probably fine, except for the fact that they don't use live bands, they use DJs, and they've got recorded music. And I can't even begin to tell you how many times our homeowners have been affected. We have called the police to the fact of, at least we've had the Gilbert chief, we've had the Mesa chief, and we've all had numerous meetings on Dos Gringos site, trying to rectify the music that comes through there. Now, that's all inside a venue also, and they all claim it doesn't. We've had the police officers out at 10:00 at night, standing in neighbors' backyards, a lot farther than what this venue is, and you could hear very clearly Rolling Stones or whatever they were playing. The police sit there on the corner and wait for the drunks to come out. Now, while there is a lot of liquor there, I'm concerned about the liquor that is going to be happening here, while they say it's not an open bar, and that's already been addressed, but this is a really dangerous area. And if anybody's ever tried to even make a left on Greenfield during the day, good luck. So I can only imagine what that's going to add at night. As of now, because Dos Gringos had not complied for the last four years, they are subject to $2,500 a day fines. And I have no problem helping our homeowners take care of that, so...
Great, thank you. Are there any comments? Questions? Thank you. Can you give your name and address for the record, please? Were you one of the ones who wanted to give your time up before?
Well, I wasn't going to speak, but this is kind of contagious. Ralph Jerome, I live at 2521 East Gemini Street. I'm not within 300 feet of the facility, but I'm about three or four doors down from neighbors that are. And I want to address something about the noise. We hear Dos Gringos. My daughter...
I just want to, hold on for just, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but Dos Gringos is a very, very different use than what's being proposed here. That's a bar that's 24 hours operated, so to compare that to...
I'm not comparing that.
Okay. As long as we can put this all back in context, I would appreciate that.
My daughter, she's got a second-floor bedroom, and in the middle of the winter, she leaves her door, or window closed, because she says, "I can't sleep because of the noise." Pioneer Elementary is down there at Greenfield and Baseline, and I hear the morning announcements. I hear bands practicing at other schools. Sound does carry. I attended the second meeting with the applicant, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but he was telling us about a event they had over the summer, just to test out the facility, it was a small event, and he walked along our fence line at Carriage Park, and he goes, "I couldn't hear our event, but I heard some other noise, and it turned out to be a party in our neighborhood." I had a party this summer, 60 people maybe, and we did have alcohol, but, you know, noise travels. All I had was a couple speakers inside the house and just background music, and noise does travel. And now, you're going to tell us that you can control 200, 300 people if there is alcohol at the event, where that noise is still going to travel? And that's what we're worried about. The other thing I'm worried about is, my wife was out walking the dog the other night, they had an event Saturday night. They had... They had a traffic controller there monitoring traffic. She said she witnessed, and she's not here tonight, but she would sign something, swear to this, she witnessed a car coming out of Houston going south on the northbound lanes on Greenfield to get to the church parking lot. And they had two people there addressing the traffic issues, so--
Go ahead and wrap up your comments.
Like Jeopardy. So that, I mean, it could get out of hand, and that's what we're worried about, you know? And you see the passion in our neighborhood. You see that Carriage Park is kind of unique. We have large lots, you know, we've all been there 18 years, 18-plus years, and, you know, we're happy there. Our neighbors, we're all good friends of our neighbors, and a lot of people are worried. And that's what we have the concern about.
Great, thank you, Mr. Jerome. Do we have any questions for Mr. Jerome? Thank you. All right, Jennifer Liebert, do you wish to speak, or have your points been addressed? Okay, thank you very much. She marks that she's opposed to this item. I may butcher this. Lamra Hom or Horn? You gave up your time as well. She marks also that she's opposed to the item before us tonight. Henrik Aylers, do you wish to speak? Keep your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Henrik Aylers, 2481 East Gemini Street. I'm also not one of the neighbors within 300 feet, but it's probably 400 feet. One of my points that I wanted to make that hasn't been made yet is that the process so far has been a little confusing because the-- I ran on the county access website and then I ran the number of properties that needed to be notified within 300 feet. It's 27 of them notified, actually, for the initial planning and zoning meeting were 10. So about a third of the neighbors that were affected were notified. A lot of us would have been here a month ago and addressed this. And I did attend the meeting, the neighborhood meeting, about two or so weeks ago, and I didn't really feel that the issue of noise was addressed very much. There was a lot of discussion about traffic, but the concern that most of the neighbors in Carriage Park and Valvista Lakes have are related to noise, and we've talked about that at length. The other concern I have is parking. There's not 100 parking spots available at the location. There allegedly will be up to 400 people. Somebody said there will be four people to a car. I don't think that's a realistic assumption for a business event. I'd say two if you're lucky, which means that there will be 100 cars that have no parking at that location that will spill over into either Vista Lakes or the Carriage Park neighborhoods. Those are really my major concerns, the noise and traffic. Also, getting on and off Greenfield from these very restricted both parking lots and Houston Avenue, which is only a dirt road, is, if you have 50 cars leaving it in the middle of the night, is also very dangerous, very dark at that area.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Aylers? Thank you. Mr. David Cornwall, do you wish to speak, or do you wish to give up your time? Keep your name and municipality of residence, please.
My name is David Cornwall. Been a resident in Carriage Park since '95. Bought it on Friday the 13th, so I've been in trouble ever since, I guess. But anyway, what I wanted to make sure that everybody understood is when they say traffic control, when they did that, when they had the bar in there and they were having the boutiques, their officers actually went out into the street and stopped the Greenfield traffic to allow traffic to exit out of that boutique. And Greenfield's a free-flowing road. I mean, you shouldn't be stopped in the middle of that for some special event that's going on. But it was so bad, and they had people trying to make U-turns there, and there were almost wrecks every time they had an event down there. And I know they tried to control it, but I don't think you can. I mean, it's a great idea, and it sounds good, we're going to have special people there, but it doesn't work. And there's going to be accident after accident there, and you just need to be aware of that. It's really the wrong place to do it, just like everybody has said. That's really all I had.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cornwall? Thank you. Rebecca Harris, that's the last one that noted that she wanted to speak in opposition. I have others that want to speak in support and others that were opposed to the item but did not indicate that they wished to speak. Okay, we'll go through these. But again, we need to really begin, we're going to be here a long time. We're starting to hear repetitive-nature comments, so if we could just try to either group together or not reiterate the same comments over and over, that would be greatly appreciated. Okay, Mrs. Harris, could you please state your name and municipality for the records?
I'm Rebecca Harris. I live in Gilbert in Carriage Park Estates. I'm at 2421 East Gemini, which is just south of the church. So I am about 300-- I have pictures, do you guys have pictures? Okay. I'm about 305 feet south of the property in question and about 156 feet from the church parking lot that they would be using. I was not notified of the conditional use permit by the owners, and that's why I wasn't here last month. You can see from the pictures, the overhead view between the property and my property, and then a picture over from my back wall to the property. It's actually a picture of the residence. The barn is actually closer. I was a little bit confused about which one it was when I took the picture. My husband, three daughters, and I have lived in our house for over 17 years. We saved for over 10 of those years to put in our pool and surrounding landscaping. And we love our backyard, we spend a lot of time in our backyard. We spend time out by the pool, summer, winter, in all hours. It's my understanding from my conversations with Mr. Ward that this permit should not pass if it unduly negatively affects one property owner. Well, we're property owners, and this banquet facility would be a definite negative impact to our enjoyment of our property that we've worked so hard to make our own. When we went to the applicant's open house, one of the owners complained about a party in our neighborhood. I think someone had already mentioned something about that. They complained about it being loud, so I just think that when they said this, that they admitted that noise from a party in our neighborhood carries to their property. And it's a small neighborhood party. A party of this magnitude would definitely cover, carry to our property. Their gatherings have a potential for much more noise, large numbers of people, PA systems. Can I have somebody's--
If you can wrap up, please.
Okay. I have just time. The gatherings--
Who are you?
--have a potential for a lot more noise with PA systems. And this is a residential area. I don't think it's acceptable, acceptable residential use to have large, loud parties up to five days a week in any neighborhood. I would never ask my neighbors to endure anything like that from me. I heard a party from this location, from inside my house with the doors and windows closed. And last Saturday night, I was out by the pool and heard people in the parking lot loud and clear. I heard laughing, slamming car doors, I heard noise and screaming coming from the barn. I was surprised because I thought, you know, they don't have a permit yet, and I didn't think they would have gatherings, so I looked over the wall and made sure it was them, and it was. And I sat there at the pool, listening to some noise, and I thought, you know, this is really going to change the whole atmosphere of my yard, of my property, of my house. It's not going to be my peaceful place to unwind anymore. I'm asking that you deny this permit in any form. The noise it would create is not normal residential noise, and it makes it unsuitable use for a residential neighborhood. It would directly negatively affect our use of our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Harris? Thank you. I have a few that I'll go over who didn't indicate whether they wished to speak or not, but I have a Mary Hester who said she was opposed to the item. Is that the one who gave up your time? Okay, please come down and state your name and municipality for the record.
My name is Mary Hester, and I live on 2640 Gemini, which is not within 300 feet as well. And I will go through this and pick what hasn't been addressed so much. Everyone knows what the original permit request was. Now it is, you know, still able to accommodate 400, but quote, "He expects 100 to 150." I guess I'd like to know what happens if it goes over the 150. Not that 100 is tolerable, but certainly over that is not. The hours, we're now told, will actually increase two hours on either side. Instead of 10 to 10, it will be 8:00 AM until midnight to accommodate the setup and the teardown of the vendors. Again, he has touched on that he will not have live bands or an open bar. Live bands does not prohibit DJs with amplified music or individual performers with amplified instruments. This is not what the homeowners were looking for when we purchased the Star Homes in this residential area. The noise has been talked about. I think it is unreasonable to think that one person is going to police the amount of alcohol each guest consumes at the venue in addition to the amount of extra security needed, we believe, will be far greater than the owner has stated would put in place. He says no open bar. He doesn't say that the caterers can't come in with the alcohol and have their alcohol license. He doesn't say that there won't be a BYOB. So we're still a little unclear on the alcohol issue. Five days per week. We just don't think it's reasonable to believe that this facility will host nothing but inside events or outside events with quiet background music. The music most certainly will be loud, and loud enough that the residents adjacent to the facility will be impacted. I spoke about the caterers. It has been stated that the proposed use as condition would not unreasonably interfere with the use and enjoyment of nearby properties. Unreasonable implies not exceeding reasonable limits, but I don't believe that not prohibiting alcohol consumption in a residential community, not adequately providing facilities for parking, that this was never developed with, that Carriage Park was developed with that. And I just want to touch on the parking spots. The owner developer has communicated with several homeowners in Carriage Park Estates and attended a meeting, which he stated that car traffic won't be an issue since most car pools carry five to six people. I was unable to verify this number and am open to him citing his sources, but was able to find studies that prove otherwise. One in particular is a study conducted by the University of South Florida where average carpool sizes per state are presented. In this study, the average carpool size for Arizona is 2.2 people. Based on those statistics, if you go with the maximum amount of people that the venue allows, 400, we are looking at 181 automobiles. That puts us 87 spots short. One last thing, and I hope it's appropriate. I have to say I'm a bit offended that you think that collecting 150 signatures, sir, simply means that we know how to circulate petitions well. We are more than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hester?
Yeah, a real, real quick one. Am I, I just want to make sure I'm not asking you to speak for your fellow neighbors, but in your situation, do you really care if it's a live band or if it's, I mean, does the live band prohibition really mean anything to you? It's just really the music, right? It doesn't matter if it's coming from a boombox or a live band or a soul performer.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. I had Mary Fishman, but I believe you gave up your time. Okay, she indicated that she was opposed. Jeff Harris indicated that he is opposed, but did not indicate whether he wishes to speak. Okay. Please go ahead and give your name for the record and municipality.
Hi, my name's Jeff Harris. I've been a resident of Gilbert for 16 years. My house is located probably the third closest of the Carriage Park Estate houses to the proposed banquet facility. And I think it was stated already, but I wanted to just make sure it was clearly understood that the alcohol piece seems ambiguous to me, right? No open bar, no cash bar. It still leaves room for alcohol. And yeah, bring your own, I don't know how it gets in there, but to me, it's alcohol or no alcohol. And once you have alcohol, you can have, if you have 400 people there, and I use the number 400, the applicant said they had three events where there, I think, were 300, 400, and 400 people at those events already. So I'm going to use the number 300. You have 300 people drinking at an event. It's a sad reality, some of those people are going to drink a little too much. And, you know, I don't, there's people that walk down Greenfield, people that ride down, run down Greenfield Saturday nights, Friday nights, I see it all the time. To me, that's a safety issue and goes against the first condition of conditional use permit. The other piece is the noise, right? And I've got, I've got a prior experience, and we talked about the use of the Pride of Joy church before the Pride of Joy church was there. And they had occasional weddings and birthday parties and events there. And going to Chairman, or Commissioner Fulman's question about, does it matter whether it's a band or DJ, and it doesn't, and I have firsthand experience with the previous users of Pride of Church, Pride of Joy church location, that, you know, we really unduly affected my enjoyment of my yard while an event was going on. And instead of being every once in a while, this is going to happen, you know, maybe five times a week, maybe more realistically, twice a week, to me, that's still too much. It's still too much of an impact. I think this is improper use of a residential area, residential property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any questions for Mr. Harris? Thank you. I have Dave Ardell Mallison. You gave up your time? Okay, he indicated that he was opposed to this item. Julie Bader indicates that she's opposed, but didn't indicate whether she wished to speak or not. Name and municipality of residence, please.
I'm Julie Bader. I live at 2448 East Gemini Street. I live next door to Becky and Jeff, and I am one of the properties closest to the shared parking. A lot of my issues have been discussed, but there are a few that haven't yet. I too received no written notification. I received no notification for the shared parking permit and also no notification for the meeting on September 5th. I received notification on the 15th, in fact. One of my biggest issues is the hours of operation, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I don't care if their parties start at 6:00 PM and then at 10:00 PM. These are the hours that I want to come home and enjoy the yard that we have so painstakingly put together to enjoy as an extension of our home, evenings and weekends. There will be noise. The parking lot is close to my house. People talk in that parking lot when they attend service at the Spirit of Joy church. I hear their conversations. I hear them intimately. I hear all of their cars beep when they lock up. I hear all of their cars beep when they unlock. That kind of noise after 10:00 PM, evenings and weekends, would be an irritant. It would be intolerable and unacceptable with my windows open. Another concern of mine is amplified music. You can't take away a live band and have a DJ. I've heard DJs be louder than live bands. I'm just not interested in hearing any kind of amplification. Basically, in general, when I bought this property, I did my homework. When the, when the neighborhood north of us, annexed to the town of Gilbert, I researched again. This was zoned residential. There isn't anything particularly residential about this project, and I ask that you do what you can to maintain the integrity of a neighborhood that we've come to know and love for nearly 20 years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bader. Is there any questions for Mr. Bader or Ms. Bader? Thank you. I have Taylor Howm Home. Indicates that you're opposed to the item. You can give us your name and municipality of residence, please.
My name is Taylor Howe, and I live at 1075 North Pointiana in the Carriage Park Estates community. I'm the former president of the HOA board, and I'm currently on the board. I'd like to really appreciate your taking the time to hear our community's concerns about this permit and project that's being proposed. And I won't repeat a lot of the concerns that we have, but I do want to put on the record that the-- record that the HOA of Carriage Park Estates was not notified by this owner of any of these plans until September 14th of this month. And this is why you did not hear or have very much opposition or any opposition in the previous meetings. And this is why you have so many here tonight, because we are very passionate about our community. We're a small community of 136 properties, and we have residents that have lived there since the community was built. And we have also had a resurrection of new homeowners, young families with young children that have moved into the community and helped revitalize our community in such a depressed time. And we have very much concerns about the increase in traffic and noise with all these new young families moving in. So we, again, appreciate your time and listening to us. Sorry that we took you so long, but we are very concerned about this as being a non-applicable use for this community and all the communities around. One other point I'd like to make is that the permitter or the person asking for the permit did not mention that they had plans or arrangements with the other churches and schools in the area. Even though they have mentioned that the church next door in immediate proximity will accommodate them, they could have venues at other churches and schools that could interfere or be at the same time as what they're planning. And that's five days a week, most of the time during the day. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you. Please state your name and municipality of residence, please.
Yes, I'm Georgia Maholland, and I live in Carriage Park Estates. And most of what I had was covered, but there's one thing. They do have listed that their overflow parking goes to the Baptist Church and to the Grace Covenant Church. The Baptist Church is across the street, which means that's right in the middle of the block. If they're using that, do they really think people are going to walk all the way down to baseline and then all the way back to their venue? I don't think that's going to happen. We've been dealing with traffic with them already, and it's bad enough. They're talking about their events starting at about 6:00 PM. That's right in the middle of rush hour. There are times when I'm pulling out of Carriage Park where the turn lane at Guadalupe in Greenfield is backed up into the left-hand through lane. And because where I live, there's an offset between the entrance to Val Vista Estates and the entrance to Carriage Park that I don't know how many cars, but I think we can get about three there. There's usually a bottleneck. And if you have the additional traffic and you can't make a left, I should have the right to be able to get out of my subdivision. I don't want to feel like I'm trapped because I can't get out. And that happens sometimes. I can't imagine what it's going to be if we throw in a couple hundred more cars. And then you go further down the street, there's other streets. I gave you a map to look at. And the other thing is if you look at where the location for the exit and entrance, they're widening Houston to 20, so that's got to be right up against their driveway because there's no room to widen that to Houston unless they're taking away from the church parking lot. All of those exits and entrances are right there, and so they're going to be coming out. If somebody wants to go left out of their driveway and somebody wants to go left out of the church driveway and right out of theirs or something like that, we're going to have a bottleneck because people are going to be stuck. And we saw him on his --
That's okay. You can go ahead and finish your thought.
Yeah, we saw him at, when he had this event last Saturday. He was out in the right-hand lane of the street directing traffic into the parking lot. I had to go around that bottleneck because cars were stopped waiting to get in. I don't want to deal with that. I really don't. They can't control the traffic. They're just blocking Greenfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions for Ms. Maholland? No, thank you. Mr. Scott Bader indicated that he was opposed but did not wish to speak. We have quite a few more to go through. I have a Dave Mosier who wishes or who indicates that he's in favor of the item and wishes to speak. Can you please come up and give your name and municipality of residence, please?
Dave Mosier. I live at 2940 East Houston Avenue in Gilbert. I'll be really brief. Can you hear me okay? Just a couple of quick points. I've never seen this home look better. It is a home, from what I understand, from what they've proposed, is that she's living there. I can't imagine that her mom at 85 is going to want any kind of excess noise either. The other point I'd like to make, my daughter plays volleyball at Highland High School. They are going to be having a banquet at the end of the year like they do every year. They use different facilities around. They've used facilities in Mesa. They've used facilities in Gilbert. I had my wife just ask Marlene if that's something you might be able to do there, obviously if you approve of that. Didn't ask for discounts. She is a quarter of what Close Neighbor Banquet Facility would be in price. So she is giving back to the community in that way already this facility would be. The person on the Boosters Club with us had said that, she lives in Val Vista Lakes, by the way. She looked at many different facilities, but she just mentioned to me tonight at the volleyball game that I left from that she's really looking forward to this facility, if it's possible, not only because of the price, but because she really likes that facility. She's lived in Val Vista Lakes for a long time. I've lived in Wyffens Farms for a long time. And again, like I said to begin, the property is beautified. Don't know about the parking lot, but that's all I had to say.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mosier. Are there any questions for Mr. Mosier? Thank you. I have Mark Turley, who indicates that he's in favor and wishes to speak. You can give your name and municipality of residence.
Hi, my name is Mark Turley. I live just down the street on Houston Avenue from the facility. I've been a longtime citizen of Gilbert. I actually grew up in that neighborhood 30 years ago. I bought a lot about 15 years ago back in the neighborhood because I loved it so much. I am in favor. I think it's been a long night. If we can just try to remember back to the first part of the night where I think it's Mr. Wood from the town as well as the applicant, they presented. I don't think that anything that they're doing is outside of the bounds of what this property is used for. I support 100%. I've got four boys, four teenage boys, and I would even have my son's weddings here at this facility. They've been great to work with. I've been to both meetings there at their place, and they're very accommodating, want to be great neighbors. I don't think that they're going to do anything there at the facility that won't be a benefit to the neighborhood and the community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Turley? All right, Mr. William Bradford indicate that you're in favor and wish to speak. Is he here? William Bradford? Okay. Miss, I assume Ms. Veda Rogers in favor and wishes to speak? Can you give your name and municipality of residence?
Actually, she's not here. She sent a letter for us to read. Is that okay if I read it?
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
On her behalf. Dear Town of Gilbert, I was not able to attend the meeting tonight for the special use permit at the barn on Greenfield. This letter is to express my desire to help the reception center receive their permit. Having lived here in this area for 23 years, I have seen a lot of changes. My home is located on the dirt road called Houston. At different times, there have been some concerns about dust and speeding teenagers. That is life. After the last five years of poor economics and loss of jobs, income properties and other crippling factors, I strongly support this facility to bring beauty and happiness to all that use it and to help build a more supportive community. The Lutheran Church has done a fantastic job to the area, and now the barn is a great addition to what we need to move forward. As to the concerns of noise and traffic, I was coming home after one of their events was getting over. There was no traffic jams, and the actual spot where I turned in was easier to see because it was lit and they had a crossing security there. I rolled down my windows and could not hear any noise from them. Then I went home and sat on my front porch, and I did not hear anything either. I am two houses down. Over the years, I have had way more noise pollution and dust from the kids having bands beside and behind me in the new facility than this new facility. I give them my support 100% and approval. Thank you, Veda Rogers. 2573 East Houston Avenue.
Great, thank you. Louise Kircher, I'm in favor and wish to speak. Can you give your name and municipality of residence?
My name is Gary Garen, and I live in Mesa. I'm a neighbor to Dennis Elliott, who's one of the owners of the barn. And I would just like to say, I've known him for nine years. He's a man of outstanding character. You can trust him. If he says something, he'll do it. I've met Marlene, I think, once, and I found her very accommodating on everything, and I met her mom, too. I just wanted to talk to Dennis's character, and he's a man of honor, and he'll work with the community to really provide, you know, a nice facility. And he's done a nice job fixing it up. I've been over there two or three times, and the place, from what it started to what it is now, is fantastic. That's all I've got to say.
Great, thank you. Any comments, questions? I have, the rest of these cards have indicated that they're in favor of the item, but did not, some of them did not indicate whether they wished to speak or not. So I'm going to run through these. Similar to the opposition, if there are a number of you that wish to speak, I ask that you keep your comments unique and not repeat what others have said. I have a Carrie White Birch, who said that she's in favor of this item. Do you want to speak? No? Okay, thank you. Stacia Ellen Eller, says I'm in favor of this item. Stella Elliott says she's in favor of this item. Wish to speak? No. Brad Olson in favor of this item? Great, come down. Name and municipality, please.
My name is Brad Olson. I live on Houston Avenue in Gilbert as well. Last month, when I attended the meeting, I indicated that I was in favor of the use permit with a few concerns that I had regarding safety as I come and go from Houston Avenue, which is an easement, not actually a road. As we worked with applicant with Dennis over the next month, everything that we brought up has been accommodated and, in some cases, gone above and beyond what I felt even needed to be done. They did have an event that I was able to witness and kind of the same thing that Veda wrote in her letter. There wasn't a lot of noise. There were people directing traffic. They had stopped people from coming in and out of Houston Avenue, which is a concern that we had. And I just want to say, everything has been addressed, and I'm in favor of this still, and I think it's great for the community. The home has been beautified, and that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you, Brad. Michael and Carla Kelly indicates that they're in favor and says we live next door. Can you state your names and municipality of residence?
Yeah, Mike and Carla Kelly, we live right next door. We have the adjoining, our south fence joins their north fence.
And I think we're deaf.
Yeah, we must be because all these parties that I'm hearing, these tenants or these residents say that they're hearing all this noise, when they've had a party over there, I've had to go outside my back door onto my porch to hear anything. So I don't understand where this noise is coming from. They're playing music that is a low elevator music that I'm hearing outside very softly. So if I have to come outside of my house to hear this, and if you look at the way that the barn is laid out, that whole floor plan, the barn that they're holding the events in, of course, the music would be enclosed in that, but it also reflects the music to my house. And if I have to go outside to hear this, I don't understand where they're hearing this from. I totally support their dos gringos. I would be on their side because I can be inside and hear dos gringos, okay? So I understand their complaints, but I've never heard that from any events over here. As far as the parking, when the Reedlingers had the parking or those properties, I can remember back, I've been in that house since 95 roughly, and I would have to come home and move cars out of my yard because the ladies would come in there and park in my yard. That was a constant thing. That doesn't happen anymore. Nobody parks up and down the street, okay? You can't park on the street right there now. It's a different situation. The city came by and widened it to four lanes. You can't park on the street, so that's a different situation. I'm happy to volunteer my parking at my house if that would help you because I have, and I don't know these people, okay? And everything that has happened over there at that place, he has come and told me about it. He has shut down by 10. He's never done any noise or anything after 10, and that was one of my complaints to him. I didn't want alcohol there. I didn't want noise after 10 o'clock because I get up at 4:00 in the morning and go to work, and I didn't want to have to be hearing stuff at night. And he made sure that was part of it. I've got a lot more things I could tell you, and I figured that since I'm the one that's right next to him, I'd like to take a little more time, but it's up to your discretion.
If you could just quickly summarize your comments, that would be great.
You know, they've been a great neighbor. I know that they live, I know that Ms. Jolly lives there. I've seen him there. I've talked to him. My wife's talked to him. We've been over there numerous times. The storms that came through recently, they knocked the fences down. Two different occasions, he came in there and the next day, he had the fences back up and rebuilt them. He's been an honorable neighbor, good to work with. All of these, this whole section used to be a county island, and Gilbert forced us to annex into the town of Gilbert, okay? And, you know, it's a whole different ballgame than when it was back, when they're talking, back when the Reedlingers were there. And anyway, I supported, my wife supports that they've been good people to us. They've been good neighbors. And if I can't hear the music without going outside, I don't understand. I'm not deaf. I was joking about that. I don't understand how these people can hear this. And they've got a six-foot fence and a canal and a road, an access road that's behind the church there. So there's a lot of puffer there. But anyway, thank you for taking my time.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Sir, have you ever been there during a wedding? I doubt they play elevator music at a wedding, but who knows? But I'm just wondering if you've ever, as a wedding, ever been there where they're playing something a little different?
I have been there when they've had all their events, and I have had to go outside of my house to hear their events.
I wonder if any of those were weddings, but... Okay, great. No, that was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Barney, barn is one building west of my home, says she's in favor of the item.
I'm Donna Barney. I live at 2451 East Desert Lane, and I also have a history of this neighborhood. I've been there for 21 years. I own two homes there. I own one on Desert Lane that is directly across from the charter school. And I love to open my windows and hear the kids play on the grass there, on the field. Over the years, that has turned to a bigger school, and I was opposed to it and the way the traffic was. But guess what? It's life. We've accustomed to it. I just don't leave my home during 20 minutes in the morning and 20 minutes in the afternoon. I do something else. I do something else. It's just fine. We accommodate. I now live in a home that is off Desert Lane, but it backs up to Houston. There is one home between me and the barn. And I have no problem with it. As far as elevator music at a wedding, if you ever go to a wedding, you can't talk and visit if it's loud. So I think that's what's going to be going on at this barn, at the barn, is more weddings. And at my own home, I have lots of family. Probably eight times a year, we have a big wedding at my own home. And we don't play a lot of music and my neighbors don't mind it. We live in a community. We love each other. We're Americans and we love to be Americans and being entrepreneurs. And I'm proud to be an American and to live in this neighborhood and I'm for it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Barney. Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Jim Sebold, also have a letter from a neighbor, says he's in favor of this item.
I'm Jim Sebold and I live at Trilogy in Gilbert. I'm the president of the Church Council for Spirit of Joy Lutheran Church. They're immediate south neighbors. Our church has had many events over the last few years that were as big, or if not bigger, than what is the barn is anticipating doing without an incident. The barn is between 150 and 200 feet further away from its south neighbors. So why can you expect more noise? I think that thinking is illogical. The activities of the church and the barn will be on separate days, so there will be no additional traffic. Our church and the barn owners have an excellent relationship and have agreements with the other churches, Grace and Desert, to make sure there's no parking problems. It's a win-win for the community and Gilbert. So that's that one. And I've got, it'll be a real short one for the neighbor that is directly behind, directly to the east of the property. They share a property line. I am writing this note because I do not have, I cannot attend the meeting. I want to express my full support of the venue. Ms. Jolly has had a few receptions and I have watched the activities and checked on the noise level to see if there was any, if it was too loud or if they didn't stop by 10:00 PM. I am happy to say that the music was not a bother. The noise was controlled and the parties ended on time. And that was from Louis Ramirez, which is directly to the east of them.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you, sir. David Mars says I'm in favor of this item. He's a pastor of Spirit of Joy Lutheran. Do you wish to speak?
Please.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair and Planning Commissioner, my name is David Mars. I'm pastor at Spirit of Joy Lutheran Church and I speak in favor of, I'm nervous, of community livability for all of us. I hope Spirit of Joy has been a good neighbor to you. Would you say, would you say that? I hope so. I know that in our relationships with the community, that we have established good relationships and good rapport and we have never received complaints. And I thank you for an opportunity to be with the neighbors tonight to address this. As we look to developing good relationships, when Spirit of Joy purchased this property, I immediately went out and began to try to get to know the immediate neighbors. And there, we developed good, solid relationships and true bonds and sharing property and sharing where the neighbors come in and just use our property. And it's been very advantageous to be in that way. In doing and developing some of those relationships, I was very, became very aware of the reputation of the previous owners of the property and the hostility that the larger neighborhood had even towards Spirit of Joy coming into this new neighborhood and turning residential area into a church area. And we've worked very hard to overcome that. But in doing church, we've had very large events there. And I'm proud to say that since 2004, we have not received one complaint of any of these events. We do have outdoor events and the outdoor loudspeakers that are large amplified PV speakers are facing from our south wall directly south into Carriage Park. And those are events with 150 youth and loud music. And we have multiple groups with both amplified music and live bands. I'll pay attention to the...
If you could just wrap up your comments, that'd be appreciated.
Watch this property carefully and Dennis and Marlene are people of good integrity. The thing will be is that instead of basing this on past fears and the fear of the unknown of the future, a service like they're going to be providing to the community is based on one-on-one relationships and word of mouth. They're not going to be, they're going to be, I know that they're going to be working with us in the parking and understanding the larger community because they're not going to park people in our neighborhoods. As soon as they do that, as soon as we would do that, as soon as any service organization would do that, it would be their reputation and it would be against their business. I know they're people of integrity and that's why I stand here and put our reputation of Spirit of Joy on the line.
Great, thank you. Could you hold on just a second? Do you have any questions for the pastor? I do, I guess, with respect to the agreements that have been made and are in place with the applicant. I know there's been some question about coordination of events. I assume that you guys have spoken, can you give us any insight on how you plan to deal with these events?
Certainly. We've got an employed staff person and we schedule, we've sat down very precisely and spent a lot of time talking about this. We schedule very far out. We're already scheduling 2014 type of events. And so our scheduling works previous and that's the same thing that a service like this will provide. So we know that when we do end up going, oh no, we're on the same night, we already are in a situation where we share our property with multiple congregations and we're already very aware of what it means to share. We'd rather share and be a good resident, good neighbor, good community than get a reputation of just us. We're a service organization, so we want to continue to develop that. And again, it's long-term planning.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I have a Michael McCown indicates that he's in favor of this item and does not wish to speak. Shelley McCown, in favor of this item, does not wish to speak. And Tyler Boyer, forgive me if I mispronounce that, I am in favor of this item, but he would like to speak. Okay.
You said it right and I appreciate that. Madam Chair and members of the commission, I really appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedule and staying here late and to those council members and staff who are here late in doing this. I currently serve on the Arizona Board of Regents on our capital and finance committee, so I understand the time commitment and what it's like to go through these processes. So thank you very much. My name's Tyler Boyer. I'm actually a fourth-generation native Gilbert resident. I live over off 2187 East Finley. And, you know, it's been exciting for my family to go through the years and see Gilbert develop. And to see a small business owner like Ms. Jolly come in and do what she's done on the property and really make it in addition to our town is something that I respect, not only respect, but I've been incredibly grateful for. Not only have the owners been incredibly, you know, met the conditions of the staff findings, but have also been incredibly attentive, I think, to our neighbors. And I'm happy to see Gilbert supporting a common sense business in our community. Thousands currently wed and joyfully celebrate residences and churches throughout our community and, you know, enticing families to Gilbert to see what we have to offer, our clean city, our beautiful neighborhoods and to take advantage of the new shopping that we have and hotels just down the road at the Santan complex, I think is a huge benefit that nobody's mentioned. And so with that, I just wanted to say that Gilbert's not only a great place to actually raise a family, which I've done and my families before me have done, but it's a great place to start one. And so I appreciate you taking the consideration and I appreciate the staff for their recommendations and I hope that the commission will continue to project this image by supporting staff finance. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so far, that's all the comment cards that we have. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak on this matter that didn't get the opportunity to before? Okay. With that, we've asked the applicant to come back up and address any of the items or concerns raised tonight.
I can understand why there'd be a map with so many people signing a petition because the way it's been framed clearly is not the way that it operates and will operate. I wish there was an opportunity for me to frame this personally to those people. Unfortunately, we haven't been, we just haven't had that opportunity to connect. I did work with, have an opportunity to have that neighbor meeting. Their HUA president came. I extended the opportunity and invitation to work with her. I think it would have been fantastic if we could have worked, had a, you know, a meeting with the HUA. Just, it didn't occur. There's a number of things I just want to point out, but at the end of the day, I heard basically the same arguments over and over again about parking, noise and traffic. So let me just click through some of these things and then I'll address some of these minor points. We have more than enough parking on site, adjacent and overflow if necessary. We can coordinate that. We have coordinated that and there won't be an issue with that. In fact, it's really no different than the type of parking that's already on site right now at the church that operates on Sundays and Wednesdays. In fact, their volumes are somewhere between 260, as minimum as 150 up to 400. And somehow, it works for that site. That's the number of people. How would this be any different? I wish I was better with these PowerPoints. Traffic. I think part of the problem is the perception's been tainted from a prior user. That's no indication of what the current facility will operate today. The reality is, there's better mechanisms in place, whereas before it was in the county and I know how that works. It's a special use permit. A special use permit is entirely different from a conditioning use permit in the town of Gilbert. In the county, a special use permit is a zoning category, something that's for a term of years. It's not easily revocable. It's difficult to enforce. Whereas in the town, a conditioning use permit is a privileged right with conditions which can be revoked if those conditions aren't observed. You don't have to believe me about the traffic concerns. You can believe the town engineer. You can believe Paul Bash. He's the private engineer we hired to analyze this site. You can believe the way the church is operated without any impact and their number of guests and visitors are about equal to or the same as ours. They also recognize, they have a number of vents on weekends on their parking lot, inside their facility, and those really are the ambient conditions. What's interesting about this traffic study is that they determined that the number of cars generated by this facility is negligible as far as the impact on Greenfield Road. And more important, it wasn't like an engineer just wrote a letter for us. He actually had somebody come out, they lay out the strips, they measure, they take this data, they take it back and analyze the data and then they seal this letter. You don't seal these letters without being able to back it up or risk losing your license. What does this tell us? Well, first of all, these events, when we looked at the data, occur at the lowest traffic period times for Greenfield Road. Secondly, that Greenfield Road is designed for this type of volume. And more importantly, we're talking about 20 to 94 cars over a four-hour period. By the way, Paul Bash is here from EPS Group if you have any questions directly for the traffic engineer. Noise. What's important here is that we all have the same understanding of what is ambient noise conditions. We're not talking about whether you can hear a speaker or if you can hear somebody in their parking lot or if you can hear some people directing traffic. We're talking about what are the ambient conditions and is the volume that's generated by this facility substantially greater than the existing ambient conditions? Now, first of all, this facility is indoors and there's a reception hall, excuse me, there's a residence house and there's the barn and then there's a courtyard. So even when they're outdoors in the courtyard, tables or chairs watching the bride and groom come down the aisle, it's quiet, it's reverent, but it's insulated by these two structures in these buildings. We've gone a step further. They said no live bands. That's what they asked us to do. That's what we agreed to do. We said 10:00 PM curfew because that's what they asked us to do. A lot of these facilities in town actually operate till 12:00 PM at midnight. But more important are these ambient conditions. You have arterial traffic which is very loud. They mentioned Dos Gringos, like it or not, if there is noise from Dos Gringos, unfortunately, that helps establish what the ambient noise levels are, even if it's to their detriment. But even the church activity, which I thought was important that they highlighted there, they have events occurring right now in the church parking lot. That itself establishes the ambient noise level. Are we substantially greater than those? We actually took it a step further. I looked into your code. The town ordinance says the compliance standard is 55 decibels in a residential district. That's measured inside the house. So we hired an acoustic engineer to go out to the site. If this really was a parade of terribles, then certainly the data would show that. So we went out and did a measurement. This measurement occurred during an event and we took it two points. One, right next to the closest home in Val Vista Lakes to the west and to the closest home on the south. And what those measurements tell you is the typical measurement, ambient, was 70 to 74 decibels on the west and 50 to 52 on the south. That's ambient. And then we compared that with the music running with the barn doors closed and with the barn doors opened. I found it very compelling. This is from the acoustic engineer's letter and study. The measured noise impact to the nearest residential properties is either within or below the typical ambient noise level. The measured noise levels were in compliance not only with ambient, but with the town code. What's interesting, when you look at that chart down below, it was barely audible at the west, probably because there's so much traffic noise generated. And it was 47 to 48 on the south side or 43 to 45 when the doors are closed, less, if you look back, less than what the existing ambient is. Why do I go through all this effort to show you this? Because the standard isn't can I hear noise? The standard isn't is there some noise? The standard is is there substantial noise beyond what the ambient conditions are? I find it very compelling that the people closest to this property, the ones who have the most at stake, who've experienced this, are in support. They have a difficult time hearing this. What's been passed over is the fact that the owner operator lives in the house with their 85-year-old mother. Everybody that has an interest to have a quiet, good event, it's her. They have to live, they have to sleep there. It's in their best interest to operate appropriately. I know there's been a question about alcohol. I still don't see how alcohol, there's been no documented evidence, nothing that can show me that alcohol is a detriment to this area. But that being said, I'm still willing to extend the same invitation we extended the first time. It's unfortunate that they're still telling people that we're going to have alcohol. I think alcohol is 20 to 30% of the business, it's a tremendous concession they're willing to give up, but they're willing to give that up. Is this a residential area? Absolutely. But is this a commercial business? No, it is not. It's a residential, residents occupied all the time that has some accessory use. That accessory use is no different than a number of, than the facility just next door to us at the church that can have these events already. We figured out a way that this can be designed compatibly, that this can coexist with the area. We've seen that and we've heard that from the people directly right next door. When you take into account Greenfield Road and the type of traffic volume it generates, the fact that you have these old leftover remnant parcels that front along these streets, they don't lend themselves to residential uses anymore. Marlene is preserving that residential character by occupying the house and occasionally having these events. But what's most important is if there's a concern that this is a residential area and this shouldn't be here, then the answer is not to oppose this case today. The answer is to change the zoning ordinance. The fact of the matter is this use is permitted in your zoning code. Why? Because the policymakers, the people that drafted this code, they already made an analysis and a determination that this is appropriate in residential areas. And if it wasn't, they would have completely removed it from the code and they would have put it entirely in commercial categories. The fact of the matter is this, this is a use allowed in this district. It's allowed with conditions. We have provided evidence that we can meet those conditions and that's why I think staff feels comfortable with this request. They could have easily changed, they could have easily recommended denial the first time or they could have changed the recommendation beforehand. They've certainly received all the emails that have come in and the petitions, but they're still firm in their support. Why? Because they see this use can coexist. They see how the applicant's gone above and beyond what's required. He meets all, they meet all the standards of the code. They can be compatible and they have what's most compelling, the support of the people all around there. I find it interesting that the president of Val Vista Lakes HUA would oppose this request. request when they have their own facility inside their master plan community that has events like this and is just as close to residential homes. Just to give you an idea, it's about 225 feet to the nearest residence. You look at the other facilities in town. This is the Portico. It's less than 30 feet to the next-door residence. Shenandoah Mill, 40 feet to the nearest residence. Cozy Weddings, 25 feet to the nearest residence. Via Sienna, 300 feet. How do all these, how do all these reception halls and banquet facilities exist next to residential areas? Why isn't there an outpour of people opposed to it? It's because these facilities all can coexist next to residential areas when you have appropriate mechanisms in place and good operating procedures. We've gone above and beyond those things. These facilities all open and operate till midnight with alcohol. We're talking about 10:00 PM. We're talking about limiting alcohol. We're talking about doing a noise study that compares ambient and analyzes it to what our event produces with the DJ. We're talking about traffic volumes that are appropriate and compatible. We're talking about a church facility that already has these types of events, and that helps establishes the ambient conditions. So, why should you approve this? It meets all the legal requirements of the CUP. It's consistent with your general plan. It's consistent with your land development code. It's compatible with this residential area simply because of the stipulation staff has in place and the operating procedures that we've self-imposed upon ourselves. It actually preserves this residential character of the area better than if this, than the typical conversions that you see along this major arterial street. There are no legitimate traffic or parking concerns. Our actual noise is less than the ambient conditions. All the adjacent and immediate and approximate neighbors are in support. The applicant has shown a tremendous willingness to work with neighbors, and we still will if they accept our invitation. The adjacent church events already exist today. This will be no greater than those events. And most important, this CUP can revoke. So, if it is in fact as bad as the neighbors say it will be, we can lose our rights. And that's something we're willing to put at risk. I think that's a very important fact of this. Whereas in the county, it's an SUP. It's a zoning category. It's not something you can easily take away. This CUP can be revoked. I urge your support for this today. And if you have any questions, I'd invite you to ask either our traffic engineer, I'd invite you to speak with our acoustic engineers today, or Marlene. If you have any questions, they'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Baugh. Are there any questions for Mr. Baugh? Commissioner Fuller?
I'll make it very quick. Can you flip a couple slides back to where you had the noise study? Yeah, so I just want to make sure I'm reading that right. So, they're saying that on the bottom right, barn doors open to the west with the barn doors open, it was, let me make sure I'm reading this right. So, okay, so with the south, with the barn doors closed, it was 47 to 48, and with them open, it was actually...
Interesting, isn't it?
Not as loud?
I had the same question myself. In fact, I think the best person to answer that would be the acoustic engineer if you have...
No, I don't even, is that accurate or was that a typo?
That is accurate. And there's an explanation.
You know what? Is anybody else interested or am I? No, I'm, I mean, it beats the, whatever it's 47 or 49, I guess that's okay. So, I won't. Go ahead.
Any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Steiger?
You say that the operating hours are 10 to 10, but if I read things correctly, they have two hours from 10:00 PM to midnight to tear down. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, if you imagine any, you know, you have opening, when an enterprise opens, you certainly need to be there in advance to prep for the doors opening, and you have to be there when the events close. So, the point of saying 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM would be for when events would be occurring at that facility.
Any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Bianchi?
So, I mean, even though there is no use permit, there's obviously events being held here. Do we know approximately how many events have been held and have they generated any inquiries or noise complaints or anything of those nature from neighbors? I mean, I saw the event last Saturday. I lived nearby on the other side of, off of Voyager there. I saw traffic control. And if people, it seemed orderly enough, but if people are out in Greenfield trying to direct traffic, well, that, how is that not a safety issue?
I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. I'm happy to address that. First of all, the events that occurred previously and the one that occurred Saturday were for family and closest friends, just like some people said they've had their own parties at their own house. The neighbor next door says she had eight weddings at her own house for her friends. There has yet to be a professional event where they've booked anything. But your question deserves an answer. And the reason why we had those traffic coordinators out there, it was a farewell for a gentleman who was going to leave for Afghanistan on Sunday. They eloped in the summertime as a farewell and joint reception. We figured if we're going to have this event and if we don't have traffic controllers outside now, people are going to say, look, you didn't even do what you said you're going to do. So, it was a double, it was a catch-22. But upon having that event, we had those people there to not only show that we could do it, but to in fact implement what we said we would do. And that's why I think we had so many kudos from the neighbors next door, said, you know what? Good job. You did what you said you're going to do. I think part of this traffic coordination is there's some learning curve to go on, you know? But I can tell you that there wasn't a problem with traffic. There wasn't any backing up. There wasn't accidents. In fact, I did a little bit of research myself. I actually, we polled the traffic data from the site historically, and even with all events that occurred in the past with the Redlingers and all the problems that supposedly existed, and even with the church facility today, you know how many accidents have been there? I think one. Just one. And how many years was it, Dennis? Did you do the research?
Ten years.
Ten years.
Okay, sir, I'm going to need you to go to the microphone, but if you could just maybe relay his comments.
I think he's just saying that for that event on Saturday, there was never an individual in the road standing there directing people. It wouldn't be safe for themselves. It's, and honestly, it can be directed from the sidewalk with a flashlight.
No, there were multiple attendants there. There were barriers up. There was signage, you know?
You didn't see anyone in the road?
What's, I did not see anyone in the road, and I came in and out of there a couple times. But when I heard some of the comments from neighbors saying, this is what we saw, then I'm saying, well, how is that not a safety concern if people don't know where to go and come in and out of?
Good question.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Peter, or Vice Chairman Peterson?
Thank you. Mr. Baugh, is there an occupancy amount on the barn? The number of people? I would think that the fire department has listed a number of people that can actually be inside at one time.
Very good question. There will be an occupancy standard. I don't know what that standard is, and that's probably because they haven't been able to complete this process yet. But that will help guide and limit the number of people that will be on the site. I think what's also important to, just to clarify for the record, the way these events operate, people come and go. So, even though you could have a total of 300 people there overall for the whole night, it doesn't necessarily mean you have 300 people there all at the same time. And certainly, we, Marlene's been doing this for 15 years. She has experience. She understands how to operate. And I think based on her level of experience with this type of industry, she knows the type of guests that come, the hours they come, the level, the number. All these things took into play when she considered purchasing this property and actually began the process.
And one other question about the agreement with the church, the Spirit of Joy Church, and the pastor spoke. They actually have a calendar set up on their website, so I was able to look at what kind of events they have coming up. And he's right that they are planned way out in advance. But there are events almost seven days a week at this church. So, I want to know what qualifies as an event that will be going on or won't be going on at the same time that an event at the banquet hall would be going on.
I may not be the most qualified to answer that, but I can give you, I think, what is the appropriate answer. Sundays and Wednesdays are their primary days, and that's the days when they use all their parking. If there ever was an event that's booked other days of the week and we had an event, there wouldn't be a competing necessity with the parking because we have opportunities to go elsewhere. But I do think that's something critical what you said. If they do have that many events, then it already establishes what the ambient is. There's already a lot of activity occurring here already, so whatever activity we bring to the area really doesn't exceed the level that's already there right now. If I didn't answer your question correctly, though, I'd be happy to turn some time over to the...
I'd like to see what the pastor has to say, if that's okay, Chairman.
Yeah, sure.
On Fridays and Saturdays, the congregation is primarily families, and those are nights that we have found that are not good to have events. And so, that's primarily the nights in which there will be events in the banquet. And that's why we've thought through all of these things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Baugh? Okay, Mr. Eller?
Yeah, I have a question on the traffic controllers. Well, the actual controllers themselves and their...
Okay, sorry.
How are you, or applicant, looking to, how long are you looking to have them? Are they just for peak hours? Are you looking for the entire event?
Dennis, why don't you come up and speak it for the record?
My name is Dennis Elliott. I'm half of the applicant. I would it that way. I reside in Mesa, and I'm a half-owner in the Gilbert property with Marlene. Your question was, how long will the traffic people be there?
Yeah, your controller, for you, you have from your whole hours of operation all the way to midnight.
Typically, the people who are going to attend an event work out with us a schedule of when they're going to be there, and we have traffic people there from the point where they say they're going to start until the entire thing is over. That's what we did last Saturday, as a matter of fact. If you, if Mr. Bianchi saw me, I had a green vest on and was helping with the traffic. So, I know how long it takes. We're there the entire time.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any further questions? All right. Mr. Ward? You don't have any further comments on behalf of staff? Nothing after all of this? Any questions for staff before we close the hearing? All right, let's, we'll close the public hearing then and bring it back to the dais for a commission comment and possible vote. Anybody want to go first? Come on, Chad. You got to, you got to make up, yeah.
I'll start with a couple of comments. I know about the issues with Dos Gringos. I have friends that live in Valvista Lakes, and I've heard from them about the issues that they've had and that they can hear it, but it's almost an issue of apples and oranges. Dos Gringos is an outdoor establishment for a lot of that location. It is under an open cover with live music and an outdoor bar, and that's actually how they advertise themselves. I looked them up online to make sure because I thought that's how it was. I drive by there quite a lot. So, I think that's kind of apples and oranges. I understand the noise factor. I live across the street from Gilbert High School, so I hear the band practicing at all hours of the day and night. I can hear the announcements being made if I have the doors open or the windows open. So, I definitely understand that, and one of the gentlemen actually mentioned the elementary school, so I can hear that. I can understand that from them too. The issue with the combined calendars and sharing the parking is the part that kind of bothers me, and that's why I asked the question at the end. Looking at the church calendar and hearing the pastor say that they share their facility sometimes with other congregations, and I understand that happens a lot in Gilbert. There are a lot of congregations that don't have buildings, and they use other buildings to meet. I don't know how everybody's friends today, but I don't know how that will shake out in the future, and so that kind of bothers me. So, I'd like to hear what other commissioners have to say about that. I know that Commissioner Fuller talked about it earlier a little bit. I understand the whole if they close at 10 o'clock, they're going to have tear down time. I've worked with a caterer in the past, and that's obvious that if they shut down at one point, they're going to have to tear down. Tear down's the fastest thing that happens because people want to get out of there. So, it's the fastest thing that happens. It's done, and everybody leaves. The no alcohol. If the permit's approved, I don't necessarily have an issue with the alcohol. I think that if we're giving a permit to a business, we need to look at that business as a whole and what's going to make them successful. And for a venue that's going to be holding receptions for weddings, I think that alcohol's a huge part of that. Mr. Baugh said 20 to 30% of their business would be alcohol. So, I really would question if withholding the alcohol would hinder the business in the long run so that it may fail on other issues or for other issues, that it could be an important factor to their business in the future. I'm just trying to look at it realistically, like if it was my business and what I would want to have. And I understand that they're saying that they wouldn't have no alcohol or no open bars, but maybe a champagne toast or something like that. I think that would be harder for them to control. I think that it would be easier if you just said alcohol would be okay or not okay completely, which I would never agree to not, no alcohol for a wedding venue or a banquet venue, however we want to look at it. The traffic, I think that the applicant has done a great job, and I commend them for working with the town and the residents that came for last month from Houston that really opened our eyes. We had no idea that that was going on, and I think that you really have resolved a big issue because you attended last month and because it's been brought to the town engineer and the whole issue with the, I think it's a water main that's been damaged and will be repaired because of this. I thank those residents for coming last month. And even though the residents weren't notified for last month's meeting, it wasn't really a big issue for us tonight because we've heard from you all tonight. It's not a big issue that you weren't here. Those are my, those are my thoughts right off the top of my head. So, I want to see what other people have to say since this is discussion.
Commissioner Fuller?
Okay. You know, this was, you know, this is an interesting case because, you know, we had the residents last month, and we got a certain set of concerns. And then when I got my packet and I saw the, how the applicant addressed that concerns, well, I'd been getting the emails all along too, so I wasn't surprised. But I got, I got how the applicant addressed it. I thought, well, the applicant, I think, addressed all the concerns we heard at the meeting last month. I can't think off the top of my head of a concern that the applicant did not address, and I think the applicant also addressed concerns that weren't brought up at the meeting last month. And then we get, today, we have a fantastic showing by the neighbors, frankly, on both sides, and discussing, you know, concerns that I think are valid concerns, and then other neighbors saying, I live right next door and I don't share that concern. So, you really have a lot of evidence on both sides. And I think, well, just to kind of go through what Bridgette said, the alcohol issue isn't an issue, is not a big issue for me. I think, I can certainly understand the neighbors' thoughts on that, but I, to me, I think I'm just not as concerned about alcohol as I wa, I think the big issue for traffic for me, I think they've done a good job of mitigating that issue. The noise was the issue for me, I think. What I'm hearing today is the noise was something that I kind of keyed in on as, oh, this could be something that could really make this just unbearable. I thought, I thought the residents who said, you know, we have a backdoor living, we have an outdoor living lifestyle, I thought was persuasive. I really did. I thought that was, those were persuasive arguments. And we had, we got some really good collateral up here of, I live here and it's 305 feet from here to here, and here's where my pool. I thought that, those were great. I really thought those were helpful. Then, on the other hand, I have the neighbor who says, I live right next door and I can't hear a thing. I just can't hear anything. And I went out there and I tried to hear something. And then you got the neighbor right next door who I think couldn't show up, but wrote a letter, says, I'm fully in support of this, and I don't have any problem with the noise. I can't hear anything either. So, you're really left with, I'm just not quite sure which, I'm not quite, it's hard for us to adjudicate from the dais what the, what the noise level is when we get competing views and the noise study that says there really aren't any impacts because we get evidence that supports it. And I'm not sure I really heard a whole lot from the neighbors today that I have heard a lot from this facility. I thought it was more perspective, like I think we will hear a lot from this facility going forward, which I think is certainly a fair argument. To kind of wrap up my comments, I think if this were anything other than a use permit, I would have a problem with this because I think there's, I would be, I would have a much bigger problem with it because I think it's something that would be more permanent and something that would be much diff, much more difficult to monitor and control. The good news about a use permit, as we all know, is the use permit is something that can be revoked. And we've seen in town happen from, on many of occasions where you step to something in a use permit, you can't do this, and if the applicant does not follow that, they lose the use permit. I understand that is not a ideal situation, that you do not want the citizens turning into the police of the, of their neighbors. That's never an ideal situation. But I've just heard, I just haven't heard a persuasive argument. I've heard very persuasive arguments on both sides. And so, if it were not a use permit scenario, if it was something like, we're going and, or we're not going, and that's going to be the final answer, I would, I would have more of a problem with that. I think I'm leaning towards it being in favor of it because it's a use permit and because if they're, if they do have any of the problems that have been cited today, if the evidence on the other side bears out to not be actually the, what's going to happen on the ground, this is something that can be taken away fairly quickly and fairly efficiently from the town through enforcement.
Commissioner Bianchi?
Well, I guess I can safely say, since being on the commission for, I think since 2005, this is probably one of the toughest cases we've ever been presented, that, from my opinion. I came in here thinking one way, and then after the comments, I became a lot more on the fence. I listened to Mr. Strom. Being a Valvista Lakes resident, I know what Mr. Andrews is talking about, I know what Ms. McCoy is talking about. I know where the fear is when we talk about Dos Gringos because I can attest that you cannot open a patio door on a Friday or Saturday night, late at night, and you hear it, and it interferes with the enjoyment on a still night. So, I understand where the fears come from. And there's no guarantee, other than maybe a noise study, to say, well, you're not going to, you're not going to have this compounded because we're going to have another one on the other side of the street from you. So, I understand where those issues come from. You know, I've got a bunch of notes written down here, just various thing, comments that the speaker said, you know? Was this the original, was the barn an original intent for this kind of use when it was constructed or moved to be a banquet or event center? I don't know. But then, when I look at, hey, it's a shared parking use, we've got an agreement in place, it's during uses of non-use, so, you know, I don't really have an issue there. It's a single-family, large-lot residential, it's underutilized, but, you know, the argument can be made that it's a residence and someone's going to be living there. Well, they're also getting this as a source of income, so they're probably going to be a little more likely to put up with any inconvenience because it's a source of income. Whereas, somebody that has a neighbor that has to deal with any negative impacts. I was surprised when I heard the neighbors adjacent to this say, we have not had an issue with this at all, we cannot hear the noise, and it's not, it's not a concern for us. I was, that's, that's amazing to me as well. But one of the comments, and I forget the woman's name, she says, we just accommodate it. You know, well, we know where it's busy. The school sites are busy. We've got charter schools, we've got churches, we've got daycare, we've got schools right along this half-mile stretch. So, and this would be a non-peak time, but in essence, somebody is saying, we're looking to potentially have events five nights a week. I understand where neighbors can get concerned with that. But I was struck when she said, you know, we just accommodate it. There's 20, 20 minutes a day in the morning I don't do it? 20 minutes a day I don't. I, you know, I avoid that. So, which means that you have, there is an impact to these folks with these residential areas if they're now trying to have to accommodate it and work through traffic concerns and work through traffic calming and timing and mitigating these issues. So, those are my comments. I'm not quite sure where I am right now. The only way I come, I came in here thinking, with all of the concessions that the applicant made, and since, as Commissioner Fuller said, it's a use permit, I live across the way and I have no problems with this. But the issue is, that might be my personal opinion, but you have to take into account what people hear and what their perceptions and ideas potentially could be for impact. And would it be the fourth fact of finding, could it be detrimental or impact their ability to, what's the fourth, to enjoyment of their property without interference? So, that's kind of where I'm at right now. So, like I said, I would love to hear other folks' comments as well.
Commissioner Ehler?
Okay. Yeah, I truly appreciate everybody being here. We're past 10 o'clock, and to have this kind of showing is just, just says something about our community and how much we love it. I did attend the Saturday meeting that was a couple of weeks ago and heard a lot of the concerns of noise, alcohol, traffic, and I have a lot of those same concerns. I did walk the property. I walked out to Greenfield. On the traffic, my original issue, going back to last month, when we're looking, looking at the three drives, if we were to build it today, it would never happen, and it becomes a pretty cluster of an issue. But with the controller being out there and the applicant having the controllers out there from beginning to end, I think really creates, or solves, an issue that I just truly had, that how are we going to make this work, having 94 cars come in and out of here over a three or four-hour period, or, or even maybe a longer timeframe. Noise was another issue that I looked at. In the meeting and going through and walking it, you really could tell the building was geared to the north. And, and so, I really wanted to hear what the neighbors to the north and to the east because it's really focused right at them. And surprising to me that, that they didn't have an issue because if you have any amplified noise going that way, they're the first. And then, there was a little question on how we were going to move pedestrians from the church once you get out of the vehicle and how they're going to move them to the sidewalk and across. It's still, have some question, and I definitely took note of the cars coming in, the beeping of the, you know, closing, and much worried about backing up, you know, vehicles with those types, but more of the cars, you know, closing doors. So, that is something that I, I do take in consideration. I definitely look at this and say, it's a tough decision. I haven't been on the commission as long, but I would definitely say this is the hardest one I've had to look at. I've, I've really thought of this project for the last couple of weeks. It's been on my mind and kind of going through because there is a lot of concern and it has to be done right. So, that's, that's my viewpoint.
Commissioner Steiger?
Well, like, I probably don't have a whole lot of new things to add that other commissioners haven't said. I was amazed at the amount of people speaking. I thought that the applicant has done a phenomenal job of addressing the concerns that caused this to be continued from last month. My big concerns there were safety, not so much noise, based on the feedback from a month ago, but safety associated with parking and associated with the traffic on Houston. The thing that has caught my attention again that says the applicant is, is doing the things that a good neighbor, you would want a good neighbor to do, relate to the issues that were addressed in each of the bullet items that talked about what the applicant's going to do, and then the operating restrictions and the other things that, in working with staff, that they've come together and said, the, we are going to restrict ourselves under this conditional use permit. I was surprised at the, at the number of residents related to noise. And if this, like some other people have said, if this wasn't a conditional use permit but a rezoning for a business like this, that would have sunken in my mind. But I've worked with the code compliance people that Gilbert has, and I know that it's one of the strengths that this municip, excuse me, that this town has. So, I, I believe that the interests of folks who are, have a concern about noise, from a objective perspective and the level of 55 decibels, will be protected. Subjectively, no. Some people are going to say it's too loud. Others are going to say, I can't hear it. But I, I'm going to support this for those, for the reasons that I believe that the self-imposed restrictions that are going to be part of the use permit, as the staff has written it up, are going to protect the folks, whether they are on the west side in Valvista Lakes, whether you're to the south, or whether you're to the east on Houston.
Did you want to make any follow-up, follow-up comments before I start, or? Okay. And the last one here. This has been a very tough case from last month to this month. Last month, it was a little easier, I think, in our perspective. The use, we didn't have an issue with, but there were some concerns about parking. I think that was one of my biggest concerns, was how we're going to address a park, how we, were we going to address the parking issue? After reviewing all the info and the input that the community has provided, and, and again, we want to thank you for coming out tonight. It's, it's a late night, it's one of the latest meetings we've had in probably the last few years, especially with this economy. So, we do appreciate the input and you taking action in your community because that's how it helps us make better decisions for the town of Gilbert. With that said, the biggest impression that I got this evening was that there's a lot of fear out there. Valid or not valid, there's a lot of fear out there, and I think a lot of it stems from the previous uses, and that's where I get it from, and rightfully so, with the bazaars or the boutiques. And as a matter of fact, I think I've been to a couple of them in the past, so I know the site pretty well. And I can completely understand and appreciate the fears that go along with it, and I can understand how those events, in particular, last for much longer periods of time during the day. People are coming and going all day, and it's, it's a yearly thing, and I see that, and so I can appreciate why there, there might be some fear associated with this type of use. With that said, I feel like this use is much more compatible and will be much more compatible, I think, with the adjacent area for many reasons. And I think the applicant has done a very good job at trying to address those concerns and trying to make sure that they fit in well with the neighborhood and that it was a compatible, or continues to be a compatible use. In particular, again, I wanted to point out that it's an accessory use. It's not intended to be used full-time without anybody living there. And so, that, that's an important factor for me, knowing that somebody's living on the property and it's not being turned over to a full-time commercial use. That's huge for me in retrospect. I think sufficient amount of parking is provided. I think that it's great that the church adjacent to this facility is providing a cross-parking agreement. I think it's great that everybody in that immediate vicinity is kind of working together. That's what a community should do. Everybody should work together to try and make the best out of the situation that they have. I think that, for me, the hours of operation are not an issue for me. I think, like most events, they usually occur in the evenings, especially for this type of facility, and that will be, that, those events will occur at different times than other peak uses will occur. For instance, the church and the schools and all of those other uses. So, I think that's helpful as well. It's not like the bazaar that's happening during the middle of the day, all day long. For me, that, that was important as well. But I think what really clinched it for me was hearing all the neighborhood concerns for the residents to the south of the church and knowing how much they love their neighborhood and knowing how much they enjoy their backyard atmosphere and, and how they fear what could potentially happen with this use going in here and the events that would, that will occur. With the neighbors that were immediately north and the neighbors that were immediately east of this, of this facility coming out in support, that was huge for me. If these people immediately adjacent to the facility have no issues with it and can live with it, that, in my mind, made me much more comfortable with this type of use. Again, it brought back the feeling to me that all the issues, majority of the issues raised tonight are based on fear, the what-if. We can't have this again, we can't have this again, we don't want the bazaars, we don't want the traffic, we don't want the noise, all of those fears that surfaced, and rightfully so. But again, I, I feel like this, this is a completely separate use. It's comparing apples to oranges. We need to separate those and look at it on its basis as a banquet facility, not as a bazaar and not as what happened in the past, but as a banquet facility. And so, also, I wanted to point out, too, that I, I don't have an issue with the alcohol. Again, I, obviously, I wouldn't consume it, but I know that many of the, the activities like at weddings and other events that, that people occasionally like to have a glass of wine, or they like to have a toast at a wedding. I mean, some, it's important to some people and it's not important to others. I wouldn't say that 90% of the people are going to be drinking at weddings because I don't see that very often at all. But I think that it, if we want a business to be successful, that we don't take away elements from it at the very get-go, because I think that could just hinder it in the future. So, again, long belated response and summary for me, but in my opinion, I'm in support of the application before us tonight. But for me, I would probably amend one of the stipulations that references, I think it was referenced to the operating plan, and I think maybe in that operating plan, it referenced the ability to sell alcohol or not, or not use alcohol. And so, for me, I would, I would remove that so that it allows a little more flexibility for this business to, to be successful. Bridgette? Vice Chairman Peterson?
Thank you. The more everybody talked, the more I changed my mind, I guess. I've seen meetings this late. I've been on this commission since Stan Strom sat here. When I started, he was sitting on this commission. That was 12 years ago. And he happened to mention that Greenfield is a minor arterial. And then, Mr. Baugh said that Greenfield is a major arterial. So, I went and looked at the circulation map, and in that section, Greenfield is a minor arterial. Further south, it's a major arterial, so it splits. It's different. And I can't, I can't get past the hazards of, it's, it's the same issue that I had with the case earlier. It's the hazards of people pulling into all of those entrances and not being able to do it safely, and at least Greenfield doesn't have a raised median, so you're not dealing with that. But one of the homeowners came up and spoke and said that they saw somebody turn south in the northbound lane, and I said the same exact thing at last month's meeting. It may not have been out loud on the tape, but it was to one of the commissioners sitting beside me. It was one of my fears. It was exactly what I thought would happen, is that somebody would pull out of one driveway, just stay in the northbound lane to go south to pull into the church. I have, I just, I don't have as warm a fuzzy feel, and fuzzy feeling about the whole, let's be neighbors and let's share this parking and let's share this calendar and everything working out. So, for me, I, I can't support it because I can't meet all four findings. I can't, I can't meet, I can't meet the, it's not going to be detrimental to the residents, and that's probably the biggest one, and that it, and I guess would not unreasonably interfere with the use of enjoyment of nearby properties, and that even goes for the church with traffic and sharing and calendars and all of that. I think it's, I think it's too many ifs and not enough definites that we can actually go by. I mean, I asked Mr. Baugh about the occupancy and we can't even get an occupancy yet because obviously that's part of the process. They would have to have the use permit to get the occupancy, but it, it holds me back because then I don't even know how many people are allowed in the building and how many vehicles could actually, actually come to the property. So, that holds me back.
Just to the occupancy, I was curious myself and knowing the code, just doing a real basic run, using it all as assembly space inside, which you know you're not going to have, but if you did a quick run as all occupancy, you would have 230 people in that building. And that's just running a quick off the top of my head. And then, if you did the 2.2, which someone in the neighborhood did a South Florida study, that gets you to 100 and maybe a car or two over. So, that was part of curiousness of myself, and I was looking at that myself because if, because the 400, I don't know where that really came from, but if that really was true, it creates even more of an issue for me. So, looking at the building occupancy, just... So, looking at the building occupancy, just straight off top, not knowing it 100%, but that's kind of where I am, with knowing the occupancy of the building, and the cars.
Thank you. Commissioner Bianchi?
I guess in hearing the discussions, what I, what I come back to is, you know, we hear about all the concessions that the applicant has made, what he's agreed to, to make this work, and what Commissioner Peterson said, where, you know, "We're really impacting their ability to attract events." You know, he's willing to make these concessions just to make this work. And, you know, we all commend them for that, to trying to be a good neighbor, and trying to make this work. But what I come back to is, these are all factors that need, these need to be mitigated to make this work at this location, you know? Well, we have to, you know, have to have parking, we have to agree to a bunch of stipulations and conditions to make this work, which kind of tells me, well, they're obviously, these are all factors, that maybe this isn't a perfect location for this, and we're trying to fix the problems, if they, whether they exist or not, we don't know. But that's where I come back to, is, these factors all need mitigation, and we talk of, you know, there's this perception of fear, and if this'll work or not, but the fact of the matter there, it's still out there, we don't know how it's gonna turn out, and even though it's a use permit. So unfortunately, I think I'm leaning towards denial on this, just because of the fourth fact of finding, and the mitigation that we have to do on this. But like I said, this is an extremely tough, you guys know me on this, usually I have a pretty clear-cut opinion on this stuff. And I said last meeting, "I really want to see if we can make this work. It seems like the solution's there." But with all the factors that need mitigation, I just don't know.
Any further comment? Recommended motion?
I'm not sure.
Commissioner Fuller?
I think we, I'm not sure where Commissioner Ehler was, where, because a 3-3 would be a denial, and I, my tally is...
I think I counted four.
Oh, was he a, yes? I didn't get that out of his comment.
I didn't make one, but yes, I would be in four.
Oh, okay. I just didn't want to make a, I didn't want somebody to make a motion that didn't get supported.
Supported.
Yeah. I made one earlier, I thought. I made one tonight.
Are you, Commissioner Steiger? You're not gonna make the motion?
I move to make...
I move to make the findings and approve UP 12-03, VVV LLC, a conditional use permit for a banquet facility on 1.12 acres, located south of the southeast corner of Greenfield Road and Baseline Road at Houston Road, in Single Family 43 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. One, the VVV LLC banquet facility shall be in substantial conformance with the Attachment 3 Site Plan, Attachment 4 Traffic Coordination Plan, and Attachment 5 Operating Procedures Plan dated October 3, 2012. Two, hours of operation are permitted to be from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily, except the facility shall not operate on Wednesdays and Sundays. Three, parking shall be subject to and conform to the provisions of the shared parking approval contained in AUP 12-05. Four, live bands shall not be permitted, however, individual live performers may be permitted to perform at banquet facilities.
Did you want to include anything about the alcohol in that, as part of your motion, or no?
No. It, the alcohol is already covered, and restricted in there. I didn't, I didn't want to change that to either tighten it or loosen it. I wanted to leave it as it was in the operating procedures plan.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Sure. Second?
Commissioner Fuller? All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Steiger, a second by Commissioner Fuller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes four to two. Thank you, everyone, for coming down and for your time. We really appreciate you staying and providing your input. It'll be over soon. Thank you. We'll give everyone a couple of minutes to exit, and we'll convene our meeting, the rest of our meeting. Item number 30 on our agenda is the minutes, study session and regular meeting minutes of September 5, 2012. Mr. Bianchi, did you have any comments to those minutes? Commissioner Bianchi? Commissioner Bianchi?
What's that?
Did you have any comments to your study session, or the minutes from last month?
I think the only change that I had, and it could have been a misquote, was when in the minutes it talked about our October 2 meeting, but it should be October 3. It was continued October 3. But that's so minor, I don't even know if it needs to be listed.
We missed our meeting yesterday.
And I'd just like it reflected in the minutes that I'm no longer the chairman of the commission.
Oh, I know. Lucky you.
It's reflected on the agenda, that you're no longer the chairman.
I'm sitting now on this end, for the first time in four years.
If there's nothing further, I'd move for approval of the minutes.
Great. Okay, I've got a motion for approval, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to our communications portion of the agenda. Item number 31, report from the chairman and members of the commission on current events.
Chairman?
Yes.
The town of Gilbert's involved in the election that's coming up on November 6, and I'd like to point out that it's very important that people actually vote on November 6, and look for the two council candidates that will be probably way, 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 way down the ballot that you're going to receive in the mail, or go to the polling places to fill out. You can also start to come, the ballots will be out on October 11, I believe, mailed to you. You can start voting here on, on October 11 also. Last day to register to vote for any election is October 9 for the general election, and the early voting ends here on November 1. And again, election day is November 6. And then there is also included in that, a public schools election, that would be for Gilbert Public Schools Board, and also the Higley Public Schools Board. There are events coming up to meet the candidates for that tomorrow evening, Thursday, October 4, 6:00 to 8:30, at the Southeast Library, for the, for the Gilbert Public School Board candidates. And then on October 9, the Small Business Alliance is hosting one at 7:00 p.m. at 2540 South Val Vista. How's that?
That was a quick summary. That was a lot in that summary. All right. Thank you. Moving on to agenda, item number 32, report from the council liaison, Councilman Sens. You made it.
Good evening. I'm gonna make it short.
You're gonna summarize, you mean?
Brief summary. No, I just wanted to compliment the commission on the case that you had. It was tough, a lot of input, and you guys, I know it, very thoughtful, and I appreciate the hard work. So thank you for your service. And next month, I guess we'll have a new commissioner up there, and so we'll break in a new one, so.
Hopefully, we won't scare him away.
He's being sworn in tomorrow night, so he still has time.
Oh, good. Time to change your mind. All right, item number 33, report from the Planning and Development Services Manager on current events.
Chairman Whitman, planning commissioners, the only thing tonight is, there was 102 single-family permits issued last month. So it's dropped a little bit, but also, there's labor shortages because of all the permits through the valleys. There's improved lot shortages, you know, we're starting to see some new subdivision come in line, so we kind of can see where it'll drop a little bit before it takes off again, so I think that's...
Good news. Good news. All right, that concludes the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, everyone.